Hey, everybody. We need to go ahead and get started because we have our legal bond council that has to move on to other meetings, too, please. All right, let's go ahead and we'll call to order and do roll call. Oh, no, it's okay. No, well, everyone's here. We can have the record. No one's absent, so we can make it easy that way. Just approval of the agenda then for the resolution. We have a motion.
Okay, and Ms. Heights?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lima?
Yes.
Mr. Levinson?
He's not currently. Okay.
Dr. Schultes?
Yes. We have a quorum.
Yeah, if it's red, it's.
Yeah.
Mr. Levinson, we are doing roll call, so.
All right. So we just approved the agenda. So did we have some, so we need a motion for the resolution as a second, and then we'll have any further discussion, and then we can call what we need to, so. So we have a motion to move forward with the resolution to authorize the sale of bonds for Grand Junction High School?
I so move.
And discussion. Do we, I know we tabled it the other evening because we needed to get through some more information. So did everybody get their questions answered? Or anything else that you have questions that we want to ask of them today?
I think I'm good with the resolution. I do have some questions about the preliminary official statement.
You might want to move your microphone just a little bit. Sorry. Yeah, I know. Well.
Okay. I just have some questions about the preliminary official statement.
Okay, I can answer your questions on those.
Thank you. It just doesn't seem to be complete. There are some highlighted areas, some tables that aren't complete. I'm just curious if this is the final document that will be presented, or we've got further to go. And then if so, are we just signing off that it's just the preliminary and that we'll see this again?
So there's a couple of things. So the resolution approves it just as deformed because, as you mentioned, there are things that needed to be completed and filled out. The blanks you saw, most of the highlight, or all of the highlighted items, and then most of the blanks were filled in yesterday. There are a few blanks that will be filled in after pricing, and those are just going to be the final terms of the bonds. But just as far as what you are seeing, and I'm not sure which version exactly you have, but Melanie sent us the information yesterday to complete the document. And so the document is now complete, and it's essentially ready to go out to investors now. So if there's anything in particular, as far as what was filled in, we can, we can look at that, but it is, it has been filled in now.
Okay, so President Heights will sign this. We may want the current version because this is dated 12/16. Okay.
Right, this is Kim Crawford. We won't have that, everything signed until after the bond pricing. So she won't sign it until everything's done and completed.
Okay, so we just need to vote on the resolution, and then we'll get more information in that and can sign. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, well, I think that clears that up for me, and I had time to go back through and look through the information. Thank you for digging into that, Angela, a bit more, so. Okay, any further discussion? All right, we can go ahead and call the vote.
Mrs. Heights?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lima?
Yes.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Dr. Schultes?
Yes.
Okay.
And Dan, Kim, and Dalton, I want to thank you for all your help with the bond sell. And from way back when, when we set the question so that it would be really compatible with what we wanted to do and what we had told our voters, so we greatly appreciate your help in all of this.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Can I make one more statement, just in some issue we've had with the county assessor? So the way that the document was written, that we signed off, gosh, we were in office about 20 minutes, I think, when we signed off on that. It didn't, it didn't give a line item for what's going to be the new bond in Grand Junction High School. It lumped it all into the general. And just so everybody knows, like, I did look into it. I was told that we couldn't make that change for the current tax year. However, we got to make sure that that happens. For next year, the assessor's office has been lit up like a Christmas tree this week. And, and I understand that really should have been separated out so that the taxpayers could see clearly what was going to this new bond and what was previous bonds. Can we just, can we just make sure that happens?
Didn't we just receive that? Didn't we get our, our bond, the amounts and all of those? So I wonder if we already, if we just received that this week, but let me check.
Go ahead, Melanie.
So, Dan, what they're referring to is that 11.028 figure on our mill levy certification. How historically, I mean, for as long as I've certainly been around, and I don't know when it really started, but we've always had the same kind of format with the bond redemption fund just being one mill levy and looking at it really as a complete debt schedule instead of by series. And so what their feedback to us was that they would like to see that split out. And so I, like, this year, we've already signed the resolution. It was already approved. And we were right up against that December 15th deadline, and so we didn't make any change to it. But that's what they're just looking for going in, going forward, is that we separate it out by series. And so I don't know in your experience if that's something that other districts do, or if it's more common to do it our way. I just know the way we've always had it, I guess, hasn't been a problem.
Well, most districts, you know, when it comes to certification from the county, they're going to have the bond levy, and then they're going to have the general fund levy. And that's going to be, you know, the two primary components, and that's what they need to know. But as far as what the board would like to know, we can certainly break out the components of the bond levy separately. It's just when you actually certify to the county, it's just going to go as one bond levy.
Well, and that's what the county was saying they didn't want to see. And so I guess if, if I'm understanding what you're saying, if we would still pass the resolution in the same format, but maybe in like the body of the email that we send with them where we give additional information, such as how many mills it would be if we weren't receiving state funding, all of those things that are kind of supplementary information, that we could put that in there, and then I guess the county can do with it how they'd like to put it out to taxpayers on their tax bills, but.
Maybe we just need to be sure to get with the county assessor next year and plenty of time to make sure that we can do that. They just want the, and the taxpayers want to see, they just, they just want to know where, where the money is, is going and, and what they're paying for on their tax bill. Like I said, they've, they've really been lit up this week. They've, they've handled a lot of phone calls, and that's just the first week. So if we could, it just in, you know, again, transparency. If we can just make sure that the taxpayers are really clear, and again, don't know whether that's to do with you guys or whether that is the county's doing. But they needed something different in the, in the schedule so that they could maybe be able to do that.
And so I did speak over the Christmas break to Ken Brownlee and as well as to his assistant, where I understood there were some questions. And so I kind of referred him to the points where we have our debt schedule available. And so by series, it's showing what amounts are going, what payments are due and what that money is covering, and offered him any information that we could send. But he didn't end up asking for anything, just that we consider formatting the, formatting it differently next year.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I'll be, I'll be happy to provide, once we, you know, once we actually issue the bonds and close on them and have a final debt schedule, we'll provide each debt schedule broken out by each series or each general obligation bond issue and, and the resulting mill levy that goes with that. And then you guys can decide, you know, how you want to disseminate that information and send it on to the county. I'm not, in my experience, I haven't had counties break them out per bond issue, but maybe that's something they can do. And certainly if that's, if that's something the board would like to see, at least you can provide that information for them.
I think, Melanie, that the others are broken out. There's one for 17, there's one for, there are several.
Well, those are different. So if I can just kind of explain that. So there's a general mill levy, which is just basically our portion of the state funding formula. And so that's what the general goes to. And then there's a line item for the 1996 mill levy, where that was a question in and of itself, the 2004 and the 2017. Because two of those are for flat dollar amounts, like, they always stay the same. They're always 4 million and 6 and 1/2 million. And then we have one that adjusts by inflation. And so we do have the mill levies broken out and how many mills are associated with those. But then for our bond redemption fund, that's where we pay like Grand Junction High School or all the 2017 capital projects and Orchard Mesa Middle School, all of those capital type things, which those we've never historically broken out, and that's what Dan is saying also, is that typically those aren't broken out for the bond redemption fund. Because what we really try to do is, even though series might be paid off at certain points or there's different, the payments fluctuate from year to year. When we're working with RBC and Dan and his team, we're really looking at our debt schedule as a whole combination and making sure that our payments as a whole between all the series are pretty consistent from year to year so that we aren't constantly yo-yoing the, the mill levy that's required for them. And so within the bond redemption fund, some of those payments do, might increase or decrease by year, but as a whole, they should stay relatively consistent, if that makes sense. So we've always looked at it more like as a whole piece, and it's not to not be transparent or to hide anything. It's just that we make, we look at our cash flow throughout the year in our bond redemption fund and all of the payments due on all of the series holistically.
Again, if we can just.
We'll give them any information that's helpful.
And make the taxpayers happy with that information would be.
And what I told Ken, too, is if there's anybody that's really just wanting to know more details, like, they can, he can absolutely give them my phone number, or we can answer the questions, get them the information that they want. This year, of course, we haven't actually sold those bonds, and so we won't have final numbers. We just went with the recommendation of where we think they'll, they'll fall, so.
Thank you.
Can I ask one clarification question about that? So by, by lumping them all together and, and trying to keep them all so they're not fluctuating wildly, so if you looked at each one independently, you'd be saying like, oh, why did this shift so much? Because it's like, as a whole, we're trying to keep it stable.
Exactly. Because like typically, for example, on a new series, we might only, like, this year, we'll only have a June payment. We won't have a June and the full year's payments. Sometimes there's interest-only payments. Sometimes it's a principal and an interest payment. And so there's fluctuations within the series, just like you were saying. Yeah.
If you were to look at one series, you'd be like, whoa, why did this go?
Right, and it would tie back to the debt schedule, but you're still explaining it no matter what, I guess.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other further discussion? Thank you for the explanation, Melanie. So, thank you, Dan, Dalton, Kim. She might have had to actually go, so. All right, are we good? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for your time.
Okay, and then on the motion to adjourn, Ms. Heights?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lima?
Yes.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Dr. Schultes?
Yes.
Okay, so now I think we're, we need to keep our microphones on, right, because we're recording. Okay, gotcha, I think. If you're talking, okay. If they're all on, okay. All right, sounds good. Zoom is? Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, well, we're going to move into our retreat. My goal is that we are out of here by 12:30 or 1 o'clock. So I know we all have other things we need to attend to, so, yeah. Fridays and my, Mondays and Fridays in my world are always very, very busy, so anyways, but. All right, so Diana, did you want to kind of kick off sort of our icebreaker?
Did I say that? Did I say that? Weird. Okay. Might have been. I can take it.
I put together an activity that really should be fairly short.
Okay.
We have other items we want to do. But, and I also tried to put those things in there that are kind of just fun little facts to know about each other. Sort of make it sort of the light-hearted exercise. We did think about doing the True Colors. I still am invited often to come do the True Colors with the Doris folks and CMU, et cetera, and with other school districts. So that's something we may want to do down the road, to kind of learn about each other and our styles and how we look at things. But I think, so I just put together a few kind of quick team-building pieces where each person would go through and sort of, you know, say something. Few people know about me is, my pet peeve is my celebrity crush. And the thing that, I think the most important one that really gets back to, you know, what I hope to accomplish in my current role is. So I think, and that one, I probably, that was really that part of what I think. Something where people can talk about, you know, what are our, our desires and hopes to accomplish that's really important. So who would like to get us started?
So there, take that. Just so you know, that's, that's Will Jones for you, right there. Always be prepared. Always be looking over your shoulder just a little bit.
Okay, something few people know about me is, now, some people do know that I was a park ranger. That was my summer job, you know, between college and then teaching. And, but, what people don't often realize is that, you know, when you work for the park service and for the federal government, you're actually considered a federal law enforcement officer. We had to go to Placerville, Virginia, and learn how to, you know, use our 10838. And I used to teach my husband to say, if you ever catch a car around, you better be running.
Okay, I didn't see you as somebody who'd be packing, so good to know, good to know.
But, so that's something that few people know is that I have gone through federal law enforcement training.
Very nice.
My pet peeve, now, you know, I'm really kind of a morbid person. I couldn't really think of anything creative there other than, you know, when people are mean to each other, then that, that's always something for me. And one thing that's common when I've done this activity with groups is people talk a lot about toilet paper. What the role is, now, that's not one of my pet peeves, but just that's, those are examples for you so you can kind of, it'll help you when your turn comes. My celebrity crush is Kim Costner.
Not bad. That's, that's good. Okay.
And then, what I hope to accomplish in my current role is, you know, when I started here, two and a half years ago, it was really, you always want to leave a place better than you found it, you know, something like that. And just wanting to, you know, make sure that our student achievement continues to go up. Now, we've had a lot of students get the Becker Scholarship and the Dando Scholarship, which are really, you know, very prized scholarships and pretty rare. And we have, each of the last two years, we've had two students get each of those awards. So it's really been pretty exciting, and those are things that, so I just hope to, you know, put us on a trajectory to continue. We also had six schools on turnaround status when I got here, and now we're down. So, it's a little mature. Where are we getting from? Okay, now who wants to be next? Go.
There you go. There you go. Well done. Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Well done. Yeah.
I mean, she's here.
Yeah, I think if you're here, you're fair. If anybody wants to run, you got about five minutes.
So something people don't know about me is very little because I come from a huge family, born and raised here in the valley. But, ooh, I don't know. Now, like I said, I come from, at one point in time in my life, I had six siblings and seven step-siblings. So plus a half-brother, so there was 15 at one time in my life, so.
That's good.
As far as a pet peeve, people lying, that's one of my biggest. Celebrity crush, I guess it would have been Mickey on the monkeys, and that was 15 years ago. But other than that, I don't watch much TV. I don't know celebrity names, so. What I hope to get to in my role right now is retirement in about one to two years.
There you go.
Oh, there you go. There's times people don't know about me. There's a lot here people don't know about me. I, growing up, my mom, I grew up, grew up in New England, outside of Boston, and then our family moved to outside Philadelphia. So that's where I did most of my, until I was in college. And my mom, I'll just give you context, every, every Sunday on the radio, right, we'd listen to the radio, listened to Frank Sinatra. And Frank Sinatra had, just played Frank Sinatra songs. And I got kind of hooked on it as a, as a young, like, who gets hooked on Frank Sinatra? So, but I went to see a Frank Sinatra concert at the, and so I'm surrounding, I'm a 20-something-year-old, and there are all these 60-something-year-old people around, but I loved it. So that was, at the Spectrum in Philadelphia, there were like 20,000 people at this thing, so, anyway. So just a little bit back, you know, pet peeve, I guess, kind of like, I think Will said it, and Diana, too, you know, I, I get frustrated with stupidity. But then people could say, well, you're stu-, you know, because you don't always think through things. So I think it's, Diana said, you know, just people sometimes, and myself included, I'm sure, you know, you're not as kind as you could be or should be because you don't have all the information you need. Sometimes you make those quick judgments on things and, and you realize you were, you were, you were wrong about that. So, so my pet peeve is more about myself and making sure I treat people well. I don't know if I have a celebrity, Frank Sinatra, I don't know.
That's okay. That's all right, yeah.
I dream of Jeannie. Remember the, see, I didn't know that.
Yeah, Barbara.
Barbara, whatever her name was. She was always. There you go.
Frank Sinatra.
And then, you know, I don't know, what I hope to accomplish is any different today than when I first started on the board in, in 15, is, you know, you're really trying to, it sounds cliché-ish, and I know we've all said it, but, and I know it's not for all of us, but, you know, really trying to do what's best for our kids and our staff and our parents and our community, to have a school system that, that is, people can be proud of and, and we're doing the best we can for our kids. And I view our role, or my role as a board member, is trying to make decisions that, that have that in mind. I used to think, just side note, that when I, when I first became a principal, I'd been teaching for 10 years, and I became a principal, and I went in and thinking, boy, if everybody just did it the way I did it as a teacher, we'd be a great school, right? And so I went in and, you know, I was at scenic, and I saw our teachers, and I thought, man, there's some outstanding teachers that are doing it totally different than I would do. And it really hit me that there's so many ways to get to, to that common end goal, you know, of what we want to achieve and accomplish. And so it was that, that thing, same thing on a board that I, you know, we all have our ideas on how things should be done or could be done or needs to be done, but if, you know, there's a lot of good thinking out here, and if we can pick that from all of us and then our community and our leadership, we can, you know, hopefully move forward in a positive way, so. Anyway, long-winded, sorry.
No, it's good.
That's a pet peeve, right? He's too damn long-winded. There you go. Oh, so I pick. Dr. Hill? He was trying to hide there. Did you notice it kind of slinking back a little bit?
I was going to say my pet peeve was doing activities like this. I'm just kidding. Just kidding. Okay, so something few people know about you. Sticking with education theme, so I was first in my family to actually go to and graduate college, and that was a big thing for my mom, being a single mother, teenage mother. Really wanted to make sure that I went through college, so. So that's something most folks all know. And then on a, just outside of education, my wife and I are both ultra-runners, so we, we like to do the, the long trail runs and hoping to do 100-miler this year. We'll see. It's, it's, I failed it twice so far, so I'm hoping to complete 100-miler this year. Pet peeve, especially being from Texas, people who drive slow in the left lane, I don't understand it. I don't.
You're always from Texas when you're in Colorado. Come on now.
Colorado's driving is interesting, so I, I just don't get it, like, why, I wish it was a law or something, but you.
It is actually, yeah.
Well, there's a law that says you can't go slower than a certain speed, but I don't know if it, but, and if you're going to be in the left lane, it's to pass, but people don't get it. They don't get it. Or they think they can take 20 minutes to pass somebody, but.
And they always have their blinker on.
Yes.
Right, while they're over there.
So I hope I'm, folks feel my pain right now, but I can't, I don't understand it. And so, yeah, I have to like calm myself while I'm driving.
How many of those people saved you from a speeding ticket?
Bridgette, are you one of those people?
Yeah. Yeah, Bridgette's the one in the left lane that I'm riding her bumper. Yeah, Bridget's the one in the left lane that I'm riding her bumper. Um, so, celebrity crush, uh, my wife.
Oh, excellent answer.
But if my wife was here, she would say, "Yeah, right." And, uh, and she would actually, it's funny, you said, my wife would have said his celebrity crush is Halle Berry. I, I had a crush on Halle Berry for, forever, so that's funny that you mentioned that one. I actually had it written down, but it's, but the right answer is my wife. Um, and then, uh, so, uh, what I hope to accomplish, um, so in my current role, you know, I, I've always said that I feel like our main job is to remove barriers for success for our schools and for students and staff and our community. And so, that's gonna be, continue, continue to be the focus. But I think also tr- transitioning into this next role that I'll be in is a big piece of that, is gonna be supporting this board, um, and making sure that we all work together as a team. So, um, so that's my hope for what I want to accomplish. And I'm gonna call on President Heights.
Thank you. All right, something few people, um, I don't know. Um, I, I've played the violin for years. Um, I still play, probably a little more rusty than I used to be. Um, my pet peeve, I was actually thinking, like, well, being a mom, you have to kind of really go out of your way to not let things bother you. So, I've gotten really good at sort of like not letting things get to me. But when Dr. Hill said people in the left lane, I would have to say that that drives me nuts, and so, um...
Because you're a speed demon.
Well, only when I'm driving certain vehicles. No. Um, uh, so I would agree. I, I, and maybe that goes to common sense, too. There's all the signs on the road that says left lane is passing only, and I don't know whether people don't read them, and then they don't get over, so maybe it goes hand in hand with what, uh, what Will was saying as well. Um, celebrity crush, so James Bond. Ah, yes. Actually, that's not bad, because I do like Sean Connery, and Daniel Craig was really good. Um, actually, all of them were actually not too bad. Um, when I was a teenager, it was Jared Leto. Um, yeah, and he was kind of up and coming, and oh my gosh, when I was sixteen, I just thought Jared Leto was, um, was it. So, and you'll find this funny, when I was in middle school, though, MC Hammer was my crush, and I had a hu- I had a poster of him on my wall. Oh, parachute pants and all, so, uh, anyways.
You didn't really have to say that.
Well, I still, like, can't touch this, so...
There you go.
It's fine. Um, so what I want to accomplish, um, yeah, I just, I think, uh, you know, wearing a lot of hats, you know, being a mom, being a small business owner, um, being from here, and just really connected to the community. Um, I just, you know, the division that we've seen over the last few years, I'm, I'm really wanting to make sure that we can come together, even if we don't always agree. I think there's a civil way in which we can converse with one another, and I think we've lost that. You know, we've lost this, um, ability to, um, I don't, just talk about things without it saying, "Well, I hate you because I don't agree with what you're saying." And so, that's one thing I really talk to my kids about, is you may not agree with somebody, but that doesn't mean that you need to treat them poorly. Um, so, I just, I, I really want to, like, what Will said, is bring that unity, um, and hopefully, um, and then just keep moving our district forward. Because if we don't have unity and we're divisive, um, like Abraham Lincoln said, "A house divided cannot stand." And so, um, you know, and then I think of Zig Ziglar's quote about the, um, the, uh, oh, what were they? The big hor- not, they weren't Clydesdales, but they were the other big horses that, when you have one horse pull by itself, it can pull like, you know, eight thousand pounds. And then when you, when you yoke the two horses together, they don't only pull sixteen thousand pounds, they can actually pull exponentially more. So, when a group of people can actually get together and work together, what you can exponentially do is quite amazing. And so, I think that's the value of a team, um, and, and working together. So, those are some things I would hope to, hope to be able to do. So, um, and I guess Angela, or no, Carrie, I'll punt it to Carrie. There we go.
Um, okay. One thing few people know about me is, so my whole family, I'm from Colorado, and all of my family is mine, everybody's mine. Um, I have a lot of my family that's in Euroban, and most of my family remembers, definitely, being a good out-of-state band. Um, but then my family used to be a race, and, um, there were a lot of, it's, 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 uh, um, the future members of my family, so they're...
You have to now.
Um, but yeah, so a long history of coming from Colorado. And, um, that's been really fun for me, because now I teach environmental engineering, and so I get to teach about how to stop contaminating the environment, and how to clean up the environment. So, I'm, 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 I'm here, of creating that contamination and living in that contamination, and trying to work around that. And it's just a big part of my life. Um, my pet peeve, I, I was gonna say the exact same thing. I just feel like as a mom, my constant job is to, like, meditate myself out of annoyance. So, I try really hard to not be blanket and really bite any specific thing. It just depends on the day and how resilient I am. So, I'm not gonna, gonna alleviate myself from having a pet peeve. Uh, my celebrity crush is definitely my husband. He's amazing, incredible, and so kind, and so wise, and so handsome, and such a good dad. And then what I hope to accomplish in my current role is to ask the right questions, to help the people expert in the things that we're trying to accomplish, do their job. And to help facilitate and support them.
I'm it. So, something few people know about me now is that I spent quite a lot of time singing in an alternative rock band on the road. That was my job. Time of my life, totally, totally recommend it.
What was the band?
I'm not telling you. That's, that private conversation we'll have later, Carrie. It was the eighties. I am not gonna be held responsible for that forever.
I believe we have a recorder in the room.
Yeah, no.
In the van.
Sorry? I couldn't hear you. I, I just sing. Just singer. Uh, pet peeve, please don't let this offend anybody, but especially an espresso. Those two things drive me freaking up a tree. When people pronounce especially an espresso, those are the two things that just, it's like, okay. It just takes me a minute to get through it, and I'm fine, and, you know, to each his own tomato, tomato. It's fine. It just, you ask what my pet peeve was, that's what came to mind. Okay, my celebrity crush, uh, intellectually, Bono. Physically, Jared Leto. Absolutely. Not Jay Leno. Good lord, nobody says Jay Leno. I'm not. Wow, yeah, no. Um, and, and I, you know, I don't, I think the guy's subhuman, so he may be my celebrity crush forever, because he's never, he never gets older, right? Very strange. Um, what do I hope to accomplish? I think we're all on the same page. Um, we need to get better outcomes for our kids. Um, do it in a way that is, um, representative of, of the beliefs of our community and, and making sure that we fulfill all of those needs. Um, equally as important in order to get that job done is to create a district where people just want to work here. We have teachers that, you know, I'd love to have a, a line waiting, of great teachers that, that want to be part of what we're doing in this district. Um, and I think with, with those two focuses, all things are possible, and, and everybody loves what they do, because we're getting a great outcome. That's it. Thank you.
Well, very good. That was, um, funny.
Enlightening.
Enlightening, yes. So, um, we're gonna have to see how the paper reports on all of those things now.
Be kind.
Yeah.
Did I mention?
Oh, yeah. I know, I was like, I kind of forgot, so...
Decisions you make when you're twenty-one may not be the decisions you would make at fifty-seven.
This is true. Let's just say that. All righty, well, um, Diana, did you want to do anything, or we're good with team building? We can move into communication?
Well, I think you were just talking about, yeah, I mean, do you want to go ahead and kind of say, because I kind of remember one of the specific pieces we wanted to talk about is how do we increase and enhance our communication in the team?
Yeah, yeah. I think that's, um, this would probably be one of the big key pieces that came out of our December board meeting, was, um, just making sure that we're, you know, kind of all on the same page around communication. So, when, um, you know, bo- a board member is interested in wanting to learn something more, how are we, how is the rest of the board, you know, communicated with, and, um, and so on and so forth? And so, I know part of what we wanted to accomplish was, um, sort of that board onboarding, um, just around, you know, open meeting laws and things like that, which we haven't had a chance to do yet. So, um, so that obviously will play into this piece of communication, um, when we're sending emails out, and so on and so forth. But, um, I think we just, I'd love for us to just kind of discuss, you know, communication. Um, how do, how does each one of us want to be communicated with? Um, and, and just make sure that we can all be on the same page, so that, um, when we're at board meetings, um, I guess nobody's feeling like they're getting blindsided, or, you know, information, um, they felt maybe they didn't have. So, just wanted to kind of kick the ball off there. So, um, Doug, I don't know if you can maybe speak to previously how things were done, and maybe what worked and what didn't work, um, you know, since you've been on the board, or even Diana and Brian, um, and then everybody else chime in, so...
You know, um, that's a good question. Um, you know, what, what we're going through, I, I, I think it's, I, I think the previous board members would agree, is not a new phenomenon, even with our previous board. There, there were lapses of communication that, that brought on frustration, um, uh, with, with all of us at certain times. Um, so, I, I don't know, I, I guess to a degree, I, I, I think, and again, maybe you're not asking for a solution. I, I would say it, it, but, but it's, it's, it's a hard one, because we all have, I mean, we're volunteers in this position. We have other things going on. This is not our main job, and it could be our main job. We, I tell people, "You could do this every day, eight hours a day plus." Um, and, and that's not our role, but you could. And, and so, how do you keep up on things particularly? And, and I know historically, there have been board members, I mean, I'm going back in the day when I was a principal, that were, I shouldn't say they weren't engaged, but not to the degree that, that, uh, the previous board, I think we were all very engaged. This board's very engaged, which is good. Um, so how do you keep everybody enlightened or abreast? And I, and I think to a degree, it falls a lot with our, with our leadership, to make sure that happens. Um, and I, and I will say, um, you're, when I first got on, Steve Schultz was our superintendent. And, and I will say, there were things I wasn't always, you know, whatever, keen on him. But one thing he did a really good job on, he always made sure the board knew what was going on. And, and oftentimes, it was through a phone call, you know, "Hey, this is what's going on," you know, those key big things. And I know that's come up, um, I think Mr. Parrish brought up at one point, uh, to, because we were having some frustrations with communications, is as you look ahead of things coming up, how can we, you know, let us know? You know, it may, you may not have a crystal ball to see six months ahead, but certainly in the next month, we can see things coming up. And I'll, I'll give you an example, Diana, and this is meant to throw dark, but it's a discussion. I, I thought, Angela, you were keen and smart to put a table on the resolution. Um, and, and it brought to mind, you know, in the past, because I think Will called me, said, you know, "How, how's this stuff work?" And it, and, and I said, you know, "In the past, when we've had those," and I'm giving a specific example, um, there was foresight to see, we have four new board members that have never been part of that process. And we had before then a two-two-and-one meeting, uh, in the superintendent's office, and we brought in the experts, and we had time to really delve into, ask questions in that venue. So, when we came to the board meeting, everybody pretty much had their questions already answered. You know, and today was fine, but we, when you think about, we were three days behind where we could have or should have been. We had to bring these folks back again, and that could have been taken, you know. But it's that kind of thing of forethought to, to see ahead, and, and I guess I would recommend that, uh, because you, you two and, and others in, in your staff know what's coming up, know what's going around. We, you know what we don't know. And, and I, I think that could be a hub of disseminating information, so no one, and, and more than just an email. Because sometimes, I mean, I'm the worst, I was bad emailing when I was a principal. I'm worse now. Um, but if, if you need to, you know, call somebody, say, "Hey, this is coming up, and just want to give you a heads up, and then if you have questions." But I, but I think that's what's occurred, and it's not unique to this group. I, I, I think we felt that, uh, in, in, when I first got on the board as well, and it's through other administrations and stuff. So, it's, it's a difficult thing, so I'm not throwing darts, please get that. It, how, how, how it's done, I don't know if I have the right answer, but, um...
I think it's unusual to have four new board members that want to...
Yes.
Generally, it's set up, you get no more than three. So, that, I mean, we did get off, I think, to a little bit of a, an, uh, an, uh, we got off on unsure footing, you know?
And, and, and that's, and it's hard, because there's so much going on.
Mm-hmm.
And, and how to get that information out. So, I don't know if there's one solid answer, but I...
So, does everybody text message? I mean, is that, I, I think, I think we need to decide, like, how do we want to, how do we want to do that? In a general sense, um, if you're, like, I, text messages are great. You can get it, you can take a look at it, you can then, you know, respond either immediately, if it's something urgent, or it gives you a little bit of wiggle room. You know, you can look at it if you're in a meeting, but yet, maybe you don't respond to it yet. It, it gives you some flexibility. Um, my only thing about text messages is, you know, for me, I think a text message needs to be seven o'clock. What an address, you know, just very clear, just minimal, short information. You know, "Call me this afternoon if you can," whatever. I, I think sometimes if we get in the weeds, um, especially if it's anything that requires a tone to be delivered properly, text messages is, is the worst invention in the world for communication. But, but just to, just to, you know, say, "Hey, when you get a minute, can you give me a call?" Or, or something like that, that's fast and easy, and it doesn't disrupt if you're, you have Carrie's in class, or, you know, "I'm in a meeting," or whatever everybody else is, is going on in their day. But at least get a, get away for us all to know that we can touch that way, and then communicate further from there.
And, and I think, just, and I certainly go around here, but I, I just want to close. It's, that, that's terrific. I think some of the things that happened, and this, again, isn't unique to this group. It, it happened before during my time on the board, when things occurred, and we weren't even aware that that had happened. And, and I could give you a number of examples, but it's, it's not important. But it's, how do we prevent that, that, that a board member, or two board members, or whoever were doing some things, and no one knew about it? It, it, and it's a heads up on that, too, like, "Hey, in two weeks, the, through the board members are gonna be doing this." Okay, great, that may stir my interest. I'd like to be a part of that and know more about it. It's, it's that, it's that not reactive text, uh, but, but a proactive thing, and, uh, that I think would really help us and, and future boards and previous boards. And, and I'm sure even internally, I mean, it happens when I was a principal, and I'm sure it happens in our businesses. How do we, communication usually is the area that, that creates, poor communication creates issues that were, could have been preventable.
Like, you said, it's an emergency situation, you guys don't know about it, but they're in town, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But you're right, probably in terms of more routine stuff, thinking about it.
Or they're proactive. And, and again, that's where, I remember when Tom brought up, if there was something like a, you know, "Look at the calendar, what's coming up in January." Okay, these are things, and these are board members going this or that, that at least gives, no one could say they didn't know this was, this was occurring, so, anyway, sorry to monopolize that.
I'll be sorry, that's good information.
No, I think that, um, yeah, I think in any kind of organization, I think communication is always something that people will always say could always get better. And so, I just wanted to make sure that as, as we're kind of all starting here, that we can hopefully get off on the right foot, um, moving forward. Um, I think, um, if there's an email that we need to promptly be able to look at, because obviously you don't want to give a lot of information in a text message, uh, maybe a heads up of like, "Hey, guys, we need you to resp-," you know, "Can you check your email?" We're gonna need a response by, um, you know, on such and such. Because not only are we getting emails from administration, we're always getting, we're getting feedback emails from, that Bridget receives, we're getting emails from the community. And so, I, and then the way Google tends to put things in conversations is you can end up kind of missing, um, a reply back... up kind of missing, um, a reply back because it gets kind of weighted down in a longer conversation. So maybe, um, if there's a response that's needed to something, because I know I've kind of missed a couple of things that people actually asked questions of me, um, in an email and then I just, I miss seeing it. So fortunately, they weren't too urgent, but I just want to make sure that, you know, can be responsive. So I think if there's something that, you know, you, you send out or any of us sends out that we're, we're wanting everybody to be aware of, I think a quick text of like, hey, there's, there's an email in your inbox, when you have a minute, you know, take a look at, uh, responding to it, so...
Agreed. I know I'm watching three emails all day long and this is number four.
Yeah.
So, um, so I could, I could definitely miss something like that. So if it's something that you need quickly, a text message, say, hey, check your emails.
And then maybe what we could do too, um, because I think, uh, you know, like with Will and I wanting to start attending the meetings with Mesa County Health Department is maybe we can just do sort of a weekly update of like, hey, uh, so and so is interested in, um, wanting to go to these meetings or do this thing or something. So then it's just a, it's just more of a heads up of like, I'm going to, you know, pop on over to, um, these meetings or I'm interested in, in that. So, um, one thing I talked to Diana about doing was, um, on the board briefs that they send out after the meetings, um, every other week, um, I think it'd be great to hear from the board itself in the board briefs. And so I'm willing to kind of spearhead writing up a little something, but I don't think it all needs to come from me. So what I would love to do is, um, that week, kind of send out something to you all and say, you know, what's something you guys went and did this week? You know, were you invited to a special meeting? Um, did you visit a school? Um, were, you know, maybe just a little something so they can see as a board, some of the other things that we're doing rather than us just being here at the meetings. And so, so, and it doesn't mean you have to do something every week, um, but I just thought that, I mean, literally just a couple little blurbs, um, on behalf of the board, uh, I think could go a long way with, you know, communication with our community, so...
Karen.
Brian.
Uh, and I've mentioned, I know I've mentioned this to someone before and not to bring up my old district because I, people get mad at me, talk about Austin, yeah, in Texas. Um, but, but there we had, we had nine board members. And so you, you can just imagine like the amount of questions and the amount of information that was needed. And so the structure we had there, and this is something that I was thinking about when this transition happens in July of like, this might be a way to do it. So I'm more throwing this out there just to say like, this was what I was thinking and, um, and that way if people want to let me know later or now, that's a terrible idea, you can do that. But, um, we had three ways of communicating with the board. Um, and they were real specific based on the type of information you were trying to get out. So there was a board weekly update and that was just what are the main things that happened this week that the board might need to know about? And some of it was celebrations. It was like, you know, this school got this award or something like that. And then it was some upcoming events so that that way you kind of knew, and a lot of times they'd say, okay, I want to attend that event. Um, and so that was a weekly thing that went out on, I think we usually sit out on Thursday or Friday. And that was just to the board. The other one was a board alert and that's those things that are like, you need to know this now, um, you know, I can, so example you don't necessarily want to give, but when we had a student commit suicide at this, at a school, like, the board needs to know about that. And so it was a board alert that went out in a format, but also that's when the, I think the phone calls then to like, hey, you need to check your, your email. Um, and then the third one was a board response. And that's when, because we got a lot of questions, um, from board members, again, with nine board members. And, um, I thought that was important, the way we had it structured, because what would happen if you didn't have the structure is that a board member might say, hey, I want some information on this. And then if you only replied to that one board member, then another board member might say, well, why do you know that information? I don't. And then they would turn in this whole, they know something I don't know. So we were really mindful of, if, if you're asking a question, I'm going to respond with the information to all five or all nine in that case, so that we're all on the same page. And so those were, and so the, the title of the emails even said, board update or board weekly update, board alert or board, um, response. And the responses even had a format, like this was the question that was asked. It might mean that we have to go out to a department and get the information from them and they send it back through and then that goes out. And so you'd get this email that had, sometimes it was five questions that were asked in those last couple of days, sometimes it was 20 questions, but the responses were in there and they had to be kind of short and, and succinct and, and precise. And then if there were additional documents, they were attached to it. Um, so, you know, those are, those, that's one way that we did it in, in my last district, but, um, part of that was, it was funneled through one way. You know, there, our, our chief of staff handled a lot of that communication with the board, um, and so that way they had a system in place for how these things are going to go out. So anyways, just kind of throwing that out there, that, that's, that's a structure we use there. It was something I'd spent on my mind leading up to the, um, to July was like having a, a system for that. And if that doesn't make sense or doesn't work, then we don't have to do that. But, um, but I think that last one's really important is that if we are just emailing, um, responses to questions to just one person or two people, it's going to start to lead to probably more confusion. So I think on our end, and I don't want to speak for Doc Circo, but I think we, we try to get things out to all five. Like if you're going to ask this question, the response is going out to all five so that you're all on the same page. And if we're not doing a good enough job of that, we can work on that too. So, and the last thing I mentioned is that we, we are a resource, um, and so, you know, if you need information, ask us and we can go find it. Um, and, and being a part of that, the, the team is, is, I see that as being important.
Did you say about the weekly, you know, that really has most everything in there?
Hmm, I think so. And you guys have been, I think everybody's been really good about, if I, if I ask a question, you send it, the question and answer out to everybody so that everybody's on the same page.
I think there's a reason for that. There have been, you know, I've asked a lot of public health questions, you and I, and both of them have not been answered. And, you know, that's another concern about, are like, well, that'll take me a long time to answer. And so I've meant my repeated request is to have the experts come and talk to us, so maybe you didn't have to put all that effort into it. So I, that hasn't been my experience, but my questions have been answered, my questions have been, so that they've been too hard to answer and the experts have not been brought in. And so I get that and really a problem. I don't know how to address that specifically.
I think, I like the organization that you're talking about, um, you know, with, uh, an alert, a response and, and then sort of a weekly update. Um, because then I think if we are looking for a certain subject title, um, because a lot of times I'll go back and search my emails, um, that we could kind of figure out, um, where I need to go back and find that specific information, so, um...
I think also on top of that, a lot of...
Well, so I, I, no, so just for me, you know, do I answer, do I reply all or do I answer just to that one person? Like if Bridget, you said some of this is A, B and C, do I answer just to you or do I reply all? Because I know we've got sent to everybody.
Personally, I prefer if people's going to do it for me or whatever, I reply to all. I've got the option to look at that and go, I don't need to know that. But I don't miss something then, you know, I make sure I'm getting everything. So I'm going to send everything to everybody, including Dr. Circo and Dr. Hill. I include everybody in it because I figure they, they're welcome to trash my email, but if I didn't send it, they have no idea what's going on.
I'll just try to...
Well, the caveat, the caveat to that though is we have to be really careful that we don't then start talking about board business via an email chain. So I think if it's in response to a scheduling thing like our board retreat or, um, like the CASB conference we're going to as a reply all, some of those things. But if we start, um, having conversations, then we're, we're basically then having a board meeting via email. And so that's where I think you, um, I mean, we're just going to have to kind of watch that because if it starts, we just can't have those kinds of discussions. Um, because I know Carrie and I, like, we just, we converse just the two of us, um, in some information back and forth, just dialogue, um, but that was not obviously with everybody, you know? Um, and so that's where we just have to be really careful.
Yeah, I talked to, I talked to a couple of different lawyers that have the part of another account about that. And there seems to be a pretty clear distinction between, um, you know, a logistics, like a reason, um, he has stated in your opinion, if you're not making a decision, do not have a problem. And being clear...
Okay, sorry. Um, but yeah, I think that, you know, as we continue to, um, explore the, you know, how to be clear with the public and each other, I think, I think it's not, we can't not share our opinions with each other. Um, and, yeah, and I'm not sure exactly how to, to manage that, but I think it's a good point that, you know, I know Brian's had a lot of frustration if I just reply to you guys because you asked me not to reply to everybody with my opinions. Um, but I, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that it's that cut and dry that I can't share a thought or ask a question. Right. And that was, that was, it wasn't to share your opinions, I just wanted to initially be careful about us starting to have board conversations. So I don't mind if, I mean, if you blind carbon copy everybody on those as long, I mean, that's why we need to obviously have some conversations with, you know, David Price, um, around what is appropriate, um, in our emails. Because, um, you know, because we do have the Colorado Opens Record Act where any of that can be polled. And so I think, and again, we don't want there to be conversation that then all of a sudden doesn't appear to be transparent. And so, um, when I had just given you that heads up, it was not to say not to share your opinion, it was just more concerned that like we weren't having conversations. And again, I understand that we'd have to then go into a vote or we'd be making decisions to vote. Um, and so I, I'm looking forward to getting some very clear-cut answers on those types of things so that, one, we can then have really good communication and everybody can express what they want to express, so...
I think that's a great point. I, I think it's, if, if that's coming up where we, we all are hearing the same information about what we can and cannot do, then it's real clear, because it sounds like right, right now there's some, because I have to say, in the previous board, I don't remember that ever coming up as an issue and we had plenty of conversations via email, uh, and maybe we should have been concerned, I don't know, but we, we probably need a in-service 101 on what the do's and don'ts of what's allowed and what isn't allowed, um, via email, I guess. Is it what we're saying, right?
I do, I mean, we can, this is something that we cannot, yeah, I'm glad that we have the format of talking to David Price and we definitely need to, we need to talk about even, we need to talk about that, which we will later. But, um, but, you know, we can ask this of, of our current in-house counsel and, and I did. And, you know, he talked to me about, you know, that clear distinction between decisions and no decisions and logistics and no logistics. And yeah, with the previous board, I was told specifically, you know, especially when we were applying to constituents or, you know, to a question from somebody, to reply all, so everybody had all the same information instead of, you know, creating pods of information. So yeah, I think it's definitely a worthwhile question to continue to ask, but we can also like, you know, it's a question that we, we already could be addressing and asking and we can ask John those questions, that's why we have him.
Well, I think we can, you know, like I said, certainly up our communication and look at different strategies and see what works best for them. Um, you know, I think, like I said, it's good to know what, if people feel like they're not communicated much in those kind of things so that we can address that issue.
What do you guys think of Dr. Hill's, the organizational part of that? I mean, do you, with something like that? Um, Brian, who would you suggest that that would be funneled through? We don't really have a chief of staff right now, right? Or is there something that...
No, and this is...
Is that you?
It's what I would be giving to the assistant super leader, um, so...
I'll find him first.
I was about to say, but, but right now, I would suggest not.
It's still you.
Um, we can find somebody else. Uh, yeah, that's fine. So that would be helpful too, because to your point, like, I'm not always sure, should I respond back? Like, I don't know if that's supposed to be me doing that. So, um, so we can talk about that, um, a structure for it. And what I'm hearing is, it's a, we're trying to find a balance between being, everyone being informed and not violating law. So, so some guidance on that, it sounds like it would be helpful as well.
Yeah, so I think it makes sense, you know, John, um, offered initially in the first couple of days to prepare a memo for open meetings to explain this to us. And I think that we should ask him to prepare that memo to explain to us these exact...
I remember another thing that would happen like, instance, when we're getting ready to do the budget, you'll have what are called two, two and ones, where two at a time will meet with Melanie and go through all those things. So that'll help you get up to speed and, and that you're familiar with that. But two, two and ones are really helpful because that way you have just a couple of board members at a time, so you're not violating any sunshine laws or anything like that. But it really gives you a chance to ask questions and make sure you feel comfortable with something before you're adopting, you know, any of those other...
Well, and, but for the, specifically for open meetings, I think that that should be an open meeting where we discuss that and learn about it. You know, I think that we all, two things, one, I don't want to be in a meeting where I don't know exactly what, what that communication has been to other, I think we all need to have that at the exact same time so we can all understand that we've all heard the same thing.
Because, you know, Carrie, because what happens is you really need to have a chance to say, you know, when, you know, when, why do we do this part of the budget this way? It's really more being able to dig deeper on a topic. And the reason you do the two, two and ones is that you cannot legally put everybody together to do that.
You know, I, I, I think you're right. I, I think, you know, my own opinion, I, I think there is a place for those two, two and ones. There are times that I, and I, I believe I'm representing Dr. Davis well. I, I, because when she came in, she, she really advocated for that, you know, transparency or openness and, and to have those discussions more in public. And I, I think that, because one frustration with the two, two and ones, if I'm going with Will, Will and I are doing two, two and one, well, I don't hear what Angela's asking or Andrea or, or Carrie. And, and you want to hear what your colleagues are thinking because that can then stir your thinking. And so I, I think there's a place for that and certain things, I can't tell you where they should be applied, the two, two and ones and where they shouldn't be. But I, I would probably rather side anymore on the, on the side of, if there's any doubt, let's do an open meeting and have maybe the top, and part of the problem was our, our agendas, I know this came up a lot with Mr. Parrish and others on our board, we have so many things on our agenda that you couldn't really give the time that things were needed. And maybe some of those things, like for instance, the other night, to have just dedicated the meeting to the bond and nothing else on the agenda, so we could have used that whole time to query our legal representative and so forth, but we have to go on to the next item. So, uh, because I think it would be benefit for all of us to hear everything at the same time and to the public that we, we keep, and, and maybe narrow the focus of the board meetings so we can really, in those issues, we need to really jump into them and, and educate us all at the same time. I, I don't know, is that what you were kind of getting at or...
Well, yeah, I think, I, I do under, I do agree. I think that there's absolutely an appropriate place for the two, two and ones. I think that things that deal with like whole board communication need to be done in a whole board setting. I think that we cannot, like, if the whole point is we need to talk about how to communicate as a board, that cannot be accomplished in twos, that it has to be done together. So are you specifically talking about the training? Yeah, or just having a meeting with John, you know, whatever, you know, having, you know, this kind of gets back to my previous question about like, when do we honor a request for experts? Like, you know, we could either have John, we could either have a, you know, a special meeting or another retreat where we just do legal stuff and we learn from them, you know, we could have him come present to us in a board meeting, whatever the case is, I think the point is like, learn about open meetings together so we all are on the same page about how to communicate.
And I, and I would say that, that occurred when we were dealing with Grand Junction High School and, and saving the old gym, not saving the old, all the complexities of that issue with, with Junction. And we as a board decided, we, we need to have a singular focused meeting in public and we met at Grand Junction High to do that. But I think that's what we're getting at for, for those issues that, that affect all of us and our community, it's probably best to do that in an open setting. Then we're all hearing the same information and we can ask the questions, but to have those experts here to, to address those. And it's, it may be more time consuming, but it may save us time in the long run because we aren't picking up messes along the way because we've addressed it, uh, ahead of time, I guess. Just a thought.
And that way the community knows that much about that.
Yeah. I, I'm thinking about boundaries. When we had boundaries as an issue, we did the same thing there. We said, let's just talk about boundaries and not everything else. let's just talk about boundaries and not everything else. And we had experts come in, we had our demographer, we had transportation. And we could really focus on that issue and we, and it, I remember those meetings would take a long time, but our calendar would be another one. I mean, we have so many of those things that are better to do in those, in that kind of setting. We can all ask the questions and everyone can hear the answers. Because there's nothing where any of us are trying to hide from people. And, but, but again, getting back, there, there are times I think the two, two and ones make perfect sense. If it's an instructional thing about how Fund 10 works as opposed to some other fund, maybe that's, that's appropriate there for, for bringing a board up to speed on certain mechanics. But in terms of decision-making, maybe it's best to do them all in public.
Yeah, I would say maybe a clear boundary would be, you know, if it's something that obviously is like a hot button issue, you know, like Mesa County Public Health, have them come talk to us, everyone together, so that we don't have the questions of transparency. If it's, you know, if it's something that affects us as a whole, that is a decision for us, then definitely let's do it all together. If it's, yeah, if it's, we're just supporting our communications folks and doing a thing, maybe two, two ones are the most appropriate. But if it's a hot button issue, let's do it in public. If it's something that impacts the whole board and how we operate, let's do it as a whole board. That would be my thoughts.
But getting back to your point, I think Brian's plan would be, and you know, working something out with Dr. Circo and the staff, a communication plan might be, because again, what you're doing, Diana, with the board update is good, but maybe we need, we may obviously need more than just that, or another way to get that information out would be to investigate other strategies.
Sorry. One of the things that I'm, I'm hearing and rightfully so is you, you feel frustrated because there isn't, I mean, you're not, are not part of, but these professionals aren't coming to the meetings. What if, I mean, we're not, I'm, I'm not tied to the meeting. I go because the president's there and if she can't go, I want to hear what's going on. What if maybe you went to the meeting with her or anybody else wanted to go and say, hey, Will, I'm going to go. Cool, I don't have to go. But I mean, so you actually hear what goes on in this meeting and, and understand it because there are professionals that are there that are talking about, you know, the health department's there, the school department's there, the school board, I mean, the school nursing assistance there. So you can hear what goes into the, the thoughts of the meeting and hear what's going on. So that way you know and you feel, you know, so we're not all three there in the same spot. But maybe you could go with, with Andrea.
Well, you know, and Will, that's, that's a great point because Will and I happened, I'm thinking of the PAB meeting the other day. And, and Will, during the meeting, this is over at Stoker Stadium, you know, texted me, you know, basically, I hope I, you know, am I supposed to be here, being him? And I said, and then we talked later, I said, oh, you, you should be at anything you have an interest in because we want to educate ourselves as to things that affect us. And I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, and the reason I asked is because they asked him, well, Dr. Irving. I was like, uh, wait, are we not supposed to have two on the board? Or, I mean, it's new, just on all the new committees that are coming up. And, but I mean, it's, it's kind of, it's, it's kind of not really frustrating, but when you go to a meeting and they're like, well, why are you here? Well, it's a committee that I was assigned to and, you know, so I didn't know if it was supposed to be two of us there, one of us, so.
And I view it, you know, personally, you know, we're elected officials, right? And, and we should be as informed as we can be. And if you have an interest in, or I have an interest, or Angela, or Andrea, or anybody has an interest in something, we should be able to go because we're going to be asked questions about that. And one thing to get things secondhand, but to be right there, you could say, no, I see how that worked and blah, blah, blah. But, so, yeah, but to your, but that was, that's a great point. And if you have an interest.
I mean, if you can't go, great, I'll go. But if not, that way you see what goes into these meetings, what's being talked about. There's no, you know, secrecy. It's not like we're saying, you know, don't tell the other board member, you know. But just so you can see what's being said and what's being heard and you understand it yourself is, would just be my.
I can, and part of that, I apologize, was my fault because I'm not familiar with these committees. You know, all I've ever done is run the list. I've never gone to the committees or anything. And I didn't know the Parks and Rec in the past. I guess we've only had one, sometimes two.
Well, what it is, and I talked, we have one vote at those meetings. And so as Will and I talked, they said, we both aren't going to be voting, but we can talk. And if, and I said, I, I always defer to Paul Kane because he's the expert.
Yeah.
But if there was something, generally, we would probably bring it back even to the board to say, hey, this came up at PAB, they want $25,000. I mean, we wouldn't be making that decision unilaterally. We would be included in the board. But it's, it's one that we came to a common understanding. Yeah, if there's something to vote, we're probably going to be on the same page. And if not, let's discuss it and they would understand that. But to be present more to, to understand the process, forget the voting, but to, to understand what's going on, I, I think is, is a responsibility we all have if we have that interest. And I know that the thing that has always frustrated, a pet peeve, I guess, is, well, if we have three people there, we're going to be an open meeting. So what? Making an open meeting. We have nothing to hide in any of these meetings we go to. And if, if it requires that, that we have four of us who want to go to a transportation meeting, then by God, we'll go to a transportation meeting. Or better yet, bring the people to a school board meeting. And if it's that, if it's that much of a issue or a topic for all of us to be concerned with, then, then maybe we need to bring those folks to, to this meeting. But it's, we shouldn't be hindered because of some requirement that we have to make it public. If it's, it needs to be public, that's great. I mean.
No, I agree. But also, I was just, and I don't know, like I said, how it's handled in the past. But for example, if you are going to the Parks and Rec meeting, you know, then maybe afterwards, you could shoot a quick email to everybody and say, hey, I went to the meeting today. This is what was discussed. The health department meetings, you know, that might, you know, save some time. It's either that or when we do have our board, all of our agendas always have space for open discussion. You know, you could bring it up at that time also.
And maybe that's something, again, as a board item, you know, at the end of the board meetings, we have future meetings. We can just say, yeah, hey, I'm going to, Will and I are going to the PAB meeting and we know this. Or, hey, I can't make that meeting. Andrea, would you cover that for me? And we do, we've done that a lot in the past.
Yeah, you guys have worked together real well on the committees and stuff. If one can't do it and the other can. But, and I don't know, like I said, what goes on at these committees and stuff. So it might save time just to shoot a quick email while it's fresh on your mind, everybody and say, hey, this is what happened. Now, if there is a chance that you do want to do more than two people, it, we just have to post 24 hours in advance and I, as long as you let me know, I have no problem getting that posting on there that, you know, you're going to be attending this meeting.
Sounds good.
I think the, the challenge that I can see is in some of these meetings, it's just, they can be public, but there's a lot of questions that get, that just get asked that can't get answered right away. And so my concern with it, I think it could cause more confusion in the public and maybe unrest until there's more answers. And so I guess with just certain things, it's, some of those are just more brainstorming things than, than not. And, and maybe that's okay. Maybe that's just what we say is like, we're just going to pose all these questions. But I, I mean, you know, when I run my business, I don't involve every person in all the decisions. Like sometimes I have to talk to a few people until we're ready to start, you know, talking to more. So I, I think we need to find that balance before like you just open up a can of worms and all of a sudden then you got people bombarding you with stuff that you don't always have all the answers for. So.
In part, you said, in part, that's the beauty of what we do. I mean, that's what today is.
Right.
That the public are going to see this. And I think it's, I would think for the public to see that we're having open, honest discussions about stuff should give the, the public confidence that we are really delving into, diving into different issues. And that, that we don't always have the answers. I think sometimes when you come in, this is my own view, when you come in with all the answers and people think, well, you've been making these decisions back here and not including the others and blah, blah, blah. But if they see us really struggling to find, hey, we need to get more information from this group or that group, I, I, I think it should give our public confidence that we are really turning over everything. And, and I'll go back to the Grand Junction High thing. You know, we, we had open meetings about the structure of the building and pictures and we had engineers coming in and all this stuff. So we didn't have the answers, but I think the confidence, and we, we saw that come out in the media and stuff, that had confidence that we were really turning over every stone. And I, I don't think there's anything to be, I, I think that's something we should be proud of and that, that we are really looking at everything. And, and we can have these discussions and we don't always agree, but we're going to, we're working for the common good here. So.
I, no, and that's a valid point. That's why, you know, I'm just proposing the question of when, when does it get to the point where it can be, or would it be detrimental because we're, it gets too much into the weeds?
Sure.
You know, yeah, because there's nothing hidden. It's just a matter of like, sometimes you have to be able to do some work so then you can go back and get more information. But, I mean, and that's fine too. I, I agree. I think if they know we're, we're struggling through asking questions and going through everything.
You ask, you know, because I have a little bit of time on the board to see. I, I'd have to say, that's kind of how we operated before. I felt when I first got on, everything was sort of prepackaged before we came to the board meeting a while back. And I, and I have to give credit to Dr. Davis, who was really one who really questioned that, that way to operate and really to be transparent. And I really think as we evolved, we became more of what we should have been to begin with. And that's more, we're going to have these open discussions about whatever it may be. And I, I, I think it bodes better for us as a district and more credibility and trust in the community that we, we don't have all the answers and we're trying to find them out. And it's, these are not easy, easy things to, to decide upon. So anyway, no, it's, you know, good discussion.
So I guess with that, because our agendas seem to be pretty packed on, you know, like especially our business meetings, are we all going to be okay if there's more special meetings called? Obviously now that, you know, some good things that came out of the pandemic is we can do things via Zoom and people can, can watch. It doesn't necessarily mean we all have to show up at the same place at the same time. But I just want to make sure as a board, is, is everybody on board with that, you know, being able to do those and maybe some of the extra time, just so that we don't have a lot of stuff to go through. Maybe every business, we don't have to necessarily wait till every business meeting to go through everything. We might have to kind of sprinkle out some special meetings in between.
I'm good with that. Yeah, I'm committed.
That work for.
Wherever it takes.
What I hear, we're all committed, hey, whatever it's going to take, if we have to have, and you're right, those Zoom meetings have been, in some part, kind of a nice thing because you could, some things don't require us to all be back here. We can do it on a Zoom and have a discussion and the public can be involved in those. We had those, you know, early on in the pandemic. So, yeah, I, I think that would bode well for all of us.
Okay.
I think sometimes we just need to get things handled and maybe we do need to come together.
Yeah.
And we can do that more efficiently. One little bite at a time when, when necessary, instead of waiting and piling it all up.
I would agree. I think it would.
Two weeks or whatever.
I think it would just, sometimes when you have something more pressing on your mind, you don't want to have to wait two weeks until you can do it. Or sometimes you need to do that so that at the business meeting, if you need to be prepared to, you know, receive public comment or, or we need to bring in somebody to present, then we have, we've kind of done some work on the front end so that then that, the business meeting can be more efficient. So, okay, that's, I'm fine with that. I just want to, again, communication wise, just making sure we're all on the same page and that that works for everybody. So, okay. Anybody else have anything about communication they want to share? All right. So let's get some clarity around just being able to reply all via emails, which we can do. We can get John to send out the memo and just make sure that then, when somebody wants to share an opinion or a thought, we know how, we all need to respond to that. And, and then Brian and Diana, if you guys are looking at maybe kind of just certain headings on things that we could be updated with, that would be great.
And stay consistent with those so that we can find what we're looking for.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would just be good.
A mountain of email that's coming in every week.
Truly.
Yeah, right? Maybe a, you know, a one, two and three, I don't know. We got to have some way of knowing. And again, I like the idea of, hey, there's a heads up if it's really important, but not, not necessarily as important as, as something that's tragic or that kind of important, but something, hey, I really do need you guys to know that that's there and I need a, a response rather quickly. You know, just, just an additional way to give us a heads up with a text message. I know that's an additional step. I get it. But do what? Respond now, yeah. Just that heads up would be really helpful for me.
Yeah, we can work on that. And then, like I said, I think the thing that was helpful with the one board response email was that, that way, like, if you send a question and then I reply all to everybody with that answer, and then you send a question, like, now you're getting 50 emails of responses. But we ended up, we put them all in one email with all the questions and responses. That means you may not get an answer right away. You may get it a day or two later. But it kept it from being a ton of response emails too to everybody and you're getting inundated with that. So, so that's part of it too. We got to be okay with, like, I asked a question on Monday, unless you're like, I need the decision because something has to happen right away. But otherwise, the decision, the answer may not come until Tuesday or Wednesday because one, we may have to go ask a department, like, what's going on with this to get the response back. So as long as folks are okay with that, and then we can compile them into one response email.
I think that sounds good. I think that would be a better way to funnel the information. Like I said, the way that Google sometimes funnels your emails and those conversations and replies, I think they're easy to get lost. So, okay.
Densing things, yeah.
Maybe just a response back, like, hey, I've received your email and I've got other questions and I'm going to compile it up. Maybe, maybe just so that they know that you've seen it and then like, or even just a received. And then just say, well, you know, there's other questions along this and we'll, we'll send out one email in response to all the different inquiries or something. So maybe just a quick acknowledgement of that. So, okay. Any other thoughts on communication? Okay. All right. So now we, well, let's, sorry, let's do this. We've been sitting for about an hour and a half. Do you guys want a little break? Yeah. Five minute, yeah, like, yeah, all right, sounds good.
You got watermelon and cantaloupe here?
My main thing is.
So, are you going to go to the white party?
Well, I just think so.
I'm going to go. My wife will go.
Now, that's my, that's when I do my 500 calorie. It's not one of those. Today's a normal day. Two weeks. And then I'm supposed to eat like slightly healthy. It really should be. Yeah. It's the candy shell on the outside.
Yeah. It's full of protein.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That might be good. Yeah.
Right. But then Dan, yeah, no, Will called me and said that we shall probably do that just to. Well, maybe it's, maybe it's justification, but.
Well, it's.
Um, I guess you can just see people are requesting it. Yeah. Yeah.
And I still have some work to do because.
Yeah.
Yeah, but. We've got it all ready. It's okay. My mom's saying. I don't think you do. I told some. Will is all the board members.
In general.
You know, we're. I think it would be good in district, board, association. I'm going to go Google that name. The A W U.
Go ahead.
I made sure the internet was scrubbed before I said that.
You haven't? Okay, lovely. We'll make sure it happens.
I did share with Dave.
I don't tell you that about my, my. You're my, you're my favorite comedian. I mean, you are. You're just, wow. You probably have so little tolerance for idiots. Like, you, that's, my neighbor's an engineer. And I, and I say. Well, I hope, I hope I articulate. I hope we're on the same point. Yeah. You should send that. Send that to me.
Okay, I think we are all back. So, I think the rest of these things, for the most part, could go, will go rather quickly, but obviously, we'll have as much discussion as needed. So, next on the agenda, we have the Bond Executive Committee. So, I think really, the reason we put this on here was just to confirm that there are three board members that would like to be on that committee and we just want to make sure that it's clear. Then we'll just post those meetings as public, if that works for everybody. Does that sound good? Okay.
It may be one.
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. And Colleen said I just need to send her the names and she'll get invites to everybody. And she was fine with that also.
Okay, I think that sounds good. And then, I know that we all got the list of, they wanted to have, kind of like with the Strategic Planning Committee, we've had different community members that would like to sit on that. My thought was, I think those of you on that committee probably need to pick who would be on that with you, similar to what the Strategic Planning Committee did. Their core group picked kind of the people that were, you know, going to be on that because you guys are going to be the ones communicating and working with them.
So, would you look at, just a question, all of us, is, you know, my question, is who's the last, first reaction to the committee? See, that's made up of Melanie, Eric, Nielsen,
Megan.
Megan. And the board members, the pick that, is that what we're thinking?
Yeah, I was thinking, yeah, I mean, I was thinking, they, you could all give feedback, but I would say ultimately, you three, yeah, kind of, I mean, I think we said we'd pick up to three. That doesn't mean you necessarily have to pick three community members, but, you know, I think we thought it could be up to that many. And I think that, again, draws the community in to participate and we can have some expertise that way.
I would think that the whole.
In your packet, if you need them, they are included in here.
Yeah, and we won't talk about any specifics right now, but I would think that it would be the whole committee, not just the three board members.
The only reason I would think that the three board members is we're a little bit closer to the community, a little bit more directly attached to the community, whereas all of the people on the committee might not necessarily know who's who or whatever.
Dr. Hill, how did?
I don't know.
Who was the, was the core group for the strategic, can you maybe just play out, how did the core, who was the core group for the strategic planning? And then, then they picked the people that participated? Maybe just some clarity around that.
Yeah, and obviously, you know, things can be done in different ways, but with that one, because we had so many applicants, we used the core team to select them and it was, it was, it was myself, Jen Marsh, with some of our senior leadership folks, Tim was there, well, he's not here anymore, represent the teachers. So, it was mainly district folks and then, and Tim, it was a, I think it was a group of like eight of us that are on that core team. And so, we had to weed through all the applicants and just select that way. So, and then, but that steering committee, board members attended those, and actually, you were on the steering committee before you got on the board, but that wasn't like an expectation that they had to go to those meetings. So, that's how we did that one, was the core team. And like I said, I think it's about eight of us that were on there. I can go back and find the list.
I would just say that there's definitely some ethics that we want to think about, like, you know, in the federal government, they don't have contractors in a committee that would have any, I know oversight's not the right.
I think that's exactly where I was going, Carrie, is, and that, maybe that's why I was thinking of it more, that the board members make that selection. Because I, I mean, it's about oversight, so I wouldn't expect the owner's rep, the contractor.
Oh.
Those people that are on that committee, making a choice for who out of the community is also serving on that. Does that make sense?
So, who is on the committee now, to your earlier, we have, we will, myself, Dr. Circo, Eric Nielsen, from the district, Eric Nielsen, Megan Renneke, Mel, and then we had board member, we had Doug and Tom were on there before. So, that was the district folks on there. You're right, we do have people that are on there that are the owner's rep and their staff. And yeah, I, if, we don't want them to be a part of the decision, that makes sense. But I guess the question then is, the decision being made by all those district people, or is it just the board, is, it sounds like what y'all are talking about?
Well, and the other issue that you have is that a lot of the key decisions have been made. I mean, they're getting very close to the point of, you know, resolution on a lot of issues. So, I mean, that doesn't necessarily mean that these people can't be involved, but I think we want to probably let them know that some of the key decisions may have already been made. And, you know, that was just a concern that was expressed in terms of just wanting people not to feel like they were going to be coming in and doing something that's already been done in some cases. They still have a voice, there's still decisions to be made, but there, a lot of the key ones have been made. That's at least what I understand from Colleen.
I guess we're talking about a couple of different things.
I would agree.
Specific to how do we, you know, who selects, or how do we select these up to three community members? You know, my sense would be to have people, our administration, I mean, your key, Eric, the people who've been there, Melanie, finance is huge in all this, our board members who are going to be part of that, Angela and Will and I, and whoever, whoever that core group is, we can all get through this. My guess is, we're going to have a consensus as to who should be on there. The other, that would be my thought. So, my recommendation or appeal would be that we go with that core group, Megan and the people we just mentioned. I think specific to the candidates, or maybe that group can have that discussion, but I think what Carrie was bringing up is, maybe this is a collective thing, there are some folks in there that are contractors and there is, would you say there's?
Yeah, I just want to, whatever, at the federal level, there's definitely guidance against having contractors oversee either their competitors or their subs, because then you don't know if every decision is made, you know, what, in what spirit is every decision made. So, there'd be like a, you know, so, I'm not, I'm not trying to go through and select people right now. I'm just saying that I think opening it up to the bigger group of the whole district would bring in more expertise about how to select.
I think that could be true and it could also then be an issue, you know, I kind of look at it that we're, who do we, who are we accountable to? We're accountable to the citizens, to the people. Ultimately, the administration, the district is accountable to us, right? And we're accountable to the community. So, there could be some conflict of interest, I'm going to use that term just really loosely to describe what I'm thinking. There could be some conflict of interest because that, those community members, I mean, why are we having them on there? It's for an additional layer of oversight, in my view. It's truly for them to see things that we might not see, to catch things that we may not catch. Not that there's anything nefarious going on, but just rather, they're at different levels of experience. I know there are a couple of engineers on the list. There are some contractors. And there would have to, of course, be no conflict of interest there if we were to choose those. But, you know, those would be, those were actually the people that I was most interested in because we do have Megan, you know, so we've got somebody from this school, we've got the administration sort of covered, but looking for people that could say, hang on, wait a minute, let's ask this question because I have some expertise around this, instead of just a bunch of people who care showing up to maybe not have enough knowledge base to catch some things. Look, this has to come off perfectly. Right? I mean, we, there's no room for error in Grand Junction High School. We have too much to do. We have too many schools that are in trouble. We have too many buildings that need way too much work done on it. We have to pull Grand Junction High School off without a hitch, so that we can continue, so we earn the trust of the people, so that we can continue to go down the road and do the other things that we're going to have to tap into them to do. You know, so, I, for me, I was looking at that, sorry, I was looking at that list saying, who can shoot holes in the deal? Who can look at it objectively and say, just pose really good questions. I'm not a contractor. I mean, I've built a few things and I've done a few projects, but nothing, my goodness, nothing on this kind of scale. And I think most of us are in, are in that boat. So, to bring in some people that have some experience in those areas, I just think would be incredibly valuable, to posing questions and playing devil's advocate a bit, so that we can, look, the more problems we find in the front end, the better off, the fewer problems we're going to have looking back on this. And that, to me, that's my goal with that.
And to your point, maybe, again, keeping issues separate, is if, and again, I don't know if we're in agreement, but again, the recommendation, if we have that, you know, the three of us plus the people we mentioned can select them and have that discussion, maybe via Zoom call, we all get and can share the folks we're looking for to be part of that. Then the other part, and it's, one's going to lead into the other, is, is what is the role of not just these three people, but even, you know, us non-experts on there? Because we have hired experts. I mean, we've hired a contractor, FCI, who, they know what they're doing. We've hired a owner's rep that has vast experience in building schools. So, we already have that expertise. That's the role of our superintendent and our board members and, and our principals to ask those questions. But we have a few other people we can bring in there, which is great. We have some engineers, like you said, and so forth. But we want to be clear about what are the responsibilities and not. And I had someone, I just talked to this about earlier, and very smart person, and they said, I'm just throwing this out.
Sure.
just throwing this out, you know, would it be one to, and I have no buy into this, if this is even a good idea, but do you look at the whole list and say, we're going to take them all, but make a, another committee, hate to have too many committees, but that, that the executive committee that currently stands, talks to them, shares with them what's going on, and then use them as a sounding board, sort of like we, good, bad, indifferent to how it's worked, our task force, you know, we have a, we have a group of diverse people, different backgrounds, that can serve as an ambassador committee, that can ask questions about what, they aren't voting on anything, aren't deciding anything, but they can throw questions at the executive committee, that can present to them every week, every other week, whatever, about, hey, here's, here's what we're doing, here's what we're looking at, what have we missed, I mean, that's just a thought, someone-
I think anybody, I mean, they're open meetings, they're going to be, if the three of us are there, so, I mean, the public can all, anybody who's, who's got a high interest, I mean, I think there are, out of our entire community, this is actually quite a short list of people that are very interested in how this, how this rolls out, so they could, I mean, people can always throw in, they can always email one of us, or-
But do you, I'm throwing this out, do you want to, I mean, with that in mind, I mean, maybe, I'm just throwing that out about this ambassador-type committee that could be used as that sounding board, like you were, I mean, to ask those questions, and even though people can do it in a general way, but if you had a specific task force or group that's designated for that, and maybe it's these people, maybe we need to open it up, because we weren't, we didn't say that's how this was going to be, but that's just a thought, or just go with the two or three, and we can select as a group, and they just become part of the executive committee, and-
Just to interject here for a minute, if you're talking, three board members, making a decision concerning who's going to be on that committee, then that is a board decision and discussion probably should be in open, so you should probably have, we'll probably need to have a board meeting to make that decision, because there's three of you, that is a quorum.
True.
Now, if it's the entire committee, the executive bond committee, who's reviewing all this and making the decision, then that's up to the executive bond committee, it's not the board of education.
That's what we were saying, that was, I don't know, we decided that or not.
We could really do it either way, but it's going to have to be either an executive committee decision wholly, or a board decision, not just-
But if you three are making that decision, then, and over to be transparent, then should discussion not be in open meeting, and have a special meeting to discuss it, and then take a vote, because it is a quorum.
And I think what we've thrown out, or at least I've thrown out, is let the current executive committee, you know, the principals, the superintendent, our maintenance director, Melanie, look at the list, say, here are the two or three people we want, come to consensus with that group, maybe not even a vote, but a consensus, and say, we want A, B, and C, and that's who we are at that point, then it wouldn't require the other, but-
Yeah, I think, because the concern was not, not having like Colleen and some of them be in on the decision-making, like, that's, I think that was what the clarity was, so, I agree, I, hearing the other people on there, I think it's a good idea to have, and I guess if you guys can't come to consensus, then you could look at the alternative of like, do we just create another advisory with all of them, or more, or more than three, if you can't come to consensus, so maybe we have a Plan A and a Plan B, so.
To respect, I would just say, if you have, I think it almost makes more sense to have a larger committee, that's having those conversations, as opposed to a variety of different committees that are charged with the same thing, just because it would become somewhat of a fiasco, and building a high school is a huge project anyway, having been involved in many of them, I mean, and so, you just, you want to be cautious about how many cooks are in the brew, and whether or not it creates a lot of confusion among people, but I think there's a way to do both, if maybe, I mean, maybe we do have a mega committee, like I said, and some of the decisions, I know they're pretty far along in doing, but at the same time, I mean, it certainly, you could have people all in this room, discussing several of the key items, and getting at what you're trying to get at, where you end up with expertise, saying, they're spending too much on that, or that's not enough allocated for that, it's going to cost you more, you know, those kind of things, so that you can utilize expertise, but at the same time, I just want to be cautious about creating too much chaos, if you end up with too many mini committees.
Right, Carrie?
I was just going to say, so regardless of what direction you go, I just, so, on top, Angela, of your, your good point about the ethics, I think that we need to also just make sure, maybe either run it by the lawyer or something, to make sure that if you do select, depending on who you select, make sure that there's no even, you know, perception of conflict of interest, because again, that is standard, to not have that as the case.
Right, I guess I-
Yeah, because we've got two engineers, there's a commercial contractor, there's a residential contractor, which obviously gives them all probably a good base of experience, but it would be good to make sure that we're not going to shoot ourselves in the foot.
You're right, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe this where John or, you know, can advise us on this, if, because you're right, we have task force set up that help a committee run things by, if we're voting on something, that might be different, I look at this, in talking over the many months with Colleen Canada, generally, the executive committee is not an overwhelming group, like Diana was talking about, and usually decisions are made by consensus, and not, you know, a vote-type thing, it's just where do we all feel we should go, and generally, my understanding is, and Diana probably can speak to this, the committee members, like the principal, the superintendents, the board members, often defer to the expertise we've already hired, which we've hired FCI, we've hired a owner's rep, and all these kinds of stuff, so it's more of a collaborative consensus group.
Well, and you have Eric Nielsen, let's say, like, for instance, when we built Orchard Mesa Middle School, you know, that came in on time and under budget, and with essentially the same organizations involved, same architects, same construction company, and so I guess what I'm saying is, we've got some good examples of how we've done that in the past has worked, this is a big project, and it's, I think there is room to have voices in the room, I just think you want to structure it in such a manner that it's not chaotic, and that people feel like they have a voice, but you can really capitalize on their expertise, but not so much so where you end up with this person and that person kind of arguing about it.
Well, maybe you guys have a meeting coming up Monday, right?
Monday, yeah.
So maybe you guys could hash a little bit of that out, maybe take some time to either reach out to some of these people, the interim, whether you can shoot some emails back, or maybe make some phone calls, maybe we can get, and get some clarity from the attorney, because if we, because that may just preclude some people altogether, but then what I would say is, you know, then you guys can decide whether, you know, is it, are they just more advisory and not voting, you know, that, I would say that you guys could kind of see what would be helpful, I think what we had heard from the community was, they really want to see the high school come in, you know, less time and under budget, and I think that's a great way to approach it, which I'm glad to hear, you know, obviously we did that with Orchard Mesa Middle School, but that's going to go a long way, when we need to go back to the community to say, listen, we, we were really good, so I think that's, the interest from these community members is really making sure that they kind of, kind of feel like there's some accountability, that that's the way the district is moving, which again, is why obviously the board members are on there, but we, you know, we want to make sure that the space is, you know, well-functional, and everything like that, but we're, but we're really working to come in under budget, I think that's key, because the way that the previous board did the bond, with it being able to go and pay it back, I think, I think that's key in moving forward, at least in my opinion, so.
I'm just, can I just say one thing about that, so I do agree, and of course, we all want every project to come in on time and under budget, but I would just emphasize that, you know, taxpayers overwhelmingly supported this at this price, so I think that a pressure to come in at some point under budget, like, it's already an incredibly lean project, and that's why taxpayers overwhelmingly supported it, and so I think that, you know, I don't think we have, I think we need to do what's right and do a good job, and we've been approved overwhelmingly for a project of this exact scope, and so I just, I want to, I want people to understand that, yes, of course, every project, the goal is on time and under budget, but also, we have been approved with overwhelming support to do the scope of work that we have defined.
And, you know, to that point, I think I can speak to this, because I was in these meetings, when we were narrowing down what to include, what not to include, even, and Diana and Brian can speak to this, we were talking about the flooring terrazzo, I think it was, as opposed to a concrete thing, and we talked about the pros and cons, and one was more expensive, the terrazzo, but we opted to go that route because of it being able to withstand the decades of use it's going to get, and so it was really a lean budget, when we came up with that figure, the 115, there was talk about going 117, but anyway, but that's where, in our meeting with Colleen, and we could talk to her, is have the contractors, and Colleen and her group educate, or bring us all back up to speed as laypeople, you know, again, Melanie and all of us who are going to be there, to how, how this was created, and how lean or isn't it is, you know, to your point, we'd love to come under budget, but I think it may be, it might certainly doable, but we don't want to ruin the programming that was designed into this building, because you could go under budget if you decide to cut a bunch of things from it, but I think we want to stay true to how the building was developed by that DAG committee, then, which was made up of parents, and teachers, and staff, about that, so anyway, I guess what I'm getting at is, if, at our meeting on Monday, we can have Colleen give us a 101 course on how did we get to this budget, and kind of bring everybody up to a common level of understanding.
So can we also get just a list of, I know I was at the last meeting, but I'm not sure if everybody was there, if there was anybody missing, I'm not sure, I don't, because I didn't have a written list, I'd like to see that list of who's on that committee. For Colleen, okay.
Yeah, I'll have to get with-
I think beyond the-
I can get with Colleen.
One of our committees, it's hers, yeah, yeah.
Beyond the folks we mentioned, the ones have been Colleen and her group, which is Ray, Scott, and Riley, and these are people, you know, in her, on her staff, and they're part of the DPM. Ray, yeah, but I think beyond that, that's the only other members of the committee are those, is DPM.
What's that?
Probably.
I guess my only, and I'm not saying that we need to skimp by coming in under budget, but when I looked at some preliminary numbers, and, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we have a $15 million contingency, which I've, I've built homes before, and granted nothing to the scheme of Grand Junction High School, but a lot of times that, and the contingency is obviously there in the case of an emergency, or if we have skyrocketing prices and whatnot, what I tend to find, though, is people then like to take those contingencies, and then splurge on other things, and so I guess that's what I'm saying is, I don't think we should plan on spending that money if we don't have to, and, and I know that then everybody's like, well, we have this extra $15 million, so we could go do this, or we could go do that, that's where I think keeping the budget really accountable, to say, are we getting, are we getting, what's, what's our needs and our wants, because then, right there, if we could save, I think that's, that's kind of where I'm looking at it from, is because you always have a really big contingency, if we've got to use it, great, that's, that's what it's intended for, so.
No, it would be, just really quick, that would be a change order, though, if we were saying, like, okay, we come, we came in, you know, and we didn't use our contingency, and now we want to do other things, that's a change order, and that is not just like wash money that you can, that we just spend on other things, that has to be, we, as, you know, as the client, we would have to dictate, we want this money spent on something else, and that would be thoroughly documented, that would be a change order, and that would be illegal if we didn't do a change order.
No, I completely agree, I'm just saying that we have a contingency amount of money sitting there, and what tends to happen is, you know, just generally speaking, is people think that they can spend it on other things and be a change order, so I'm just saying, I think there's some built-in savings that we could have, you know, moving forward, so.
That's something I think with Colleen's, in the committee, we have every business meeting, we're going to have an update from the executive committee, those are questions our board should be, you know, can be asking, and, you know, if we look like we're going to have savings, you know, do we need to add X, Y, or Z, or do we want to save that to pay back the bond, and that's something as a board, we, you know, those big dollar sums, there's things we can look at for change orders, I guess, but it sounds like what you're saying, you can't do things willy-nilly.
Oh, yeah, and nobody, especially on a project this big, nobody would just be like, oh, let's just buy the additional furniture, again, that would have to be the client saying, I want to spend, we didn't spend our contingency, and therefore I want to spend on this, and that would be a change order directed by you, so the contractor, that's part of why we have an owner's rep, to make sure that nothing is misspent, and a lot of the tasks that you were kind of laying out are directly the job of the owner's rep, and so that's why, like, scoping out everybody's, everybody's job will be so critical here, but, but yeah, the owner's rep would protect us from that, too, I mean, our contractor won't do it, that's part of why we chose them, but, but yeah, I mean, unless, unless the client is saying, I want this changed, that, that won't happen.
I completely agree, and when we built Juniper Ridge, and we had an owner's rep, the board members and the people we had on that committee helped keep that owner's rep accountable, because I can tell you that there were things that were kind of decided that I don't know that the whole community was on board about, so it's all about creating transparency and accountability, not that the owner's rep just goes and does it, but that they are truly a representative of what, what we're doing, so that's what I'm saying, it's just sort of a checks and balance, to make sure that we're doing that, because they could suggest, well, you guys have this, and now we can do these things, I'm just saying that from the community, we're really asking, do we have to do those things, and so, that's just-
My question was, who protects us from the, who protects us from the owner's rep? I mean, I get that she was vetted, and she's got the experience, and she should be doing everything right, but, and she hopefully will, but there's got to be somebody watching with their eyes on everybody else, I mean, that accountability, beyond, you know, well, we've hired you, we expect you to do the right thing, we expect you to do what we've asked, now, are they?
No, I think, and those are questions we ask as a board or the community, but just like when we hired, you know, our bond representatives, they're legally bound to represent us, DPM, same thing, they, they're under a legal agreement to represent us, and if someone finds out they didn't, and there was some negligence there, they're going to be open up for that, so, believe me, anybody who's going to make sure they follow all the crossing the Ts and dotting the Is are going to be these people we hired to represent, if it's a legal counsel, if it's a, like I said, the bond people, or DPM, or FCI, right, they're under agreements to do what we've hired them to do, and if they don't, they've opened themselves up, so I, and I, as you said, we, there's no reason we have, we've had great experience with, with Colleen Canada, and through Orchard Mesa, and we vetted them, and interviewed groups, I have no reason to think that's going to be anything but we're going to have a solid representation, but, to that point, to have these additional members there, to more eyes, that builds more confidence in all of us, that we have people with no other agenda than, let's make sure we're building the best school we can, we've committed to do, and no shortcuts, because as Carrie said, our public voted, you know, very strongly to support that package, and the building we're proposing, so.
And we just want to give them more than they voted for.
Absolutely, exactly.
Right, we don't want to, I mean, we also got them to pass things in 2017, and then, you know, it kind of, I just want to make sure that we're measuring twice, cutting once, you know, so to speak, and so, just expressing just some thoughts and concerns to make sure that, because, I think because they've given us another shot, we need to take very good care in this project, so that it doesn't hinder us in anything else, that we need to go back and ask them, you know, in the future, so, I think it's just a matter of kind of keeping all of us accountable in moving.
Your spot.
To me, that's what the community members are really about, is, is, you know, getting a diverse group that can look at, just have a different set of eyes from a different vantage point.
And I look at the same thing with the members of our administration, I mean, our superintendent's office, our, our finance person, our maintenance people, I mean, they, they're going to ask hard questions, too, because that's what we have to do to protect the interests of our district, but no, I think we're all on the same page with what I'm hearing here, so.
I think so, too, did anybody else have anything?
So, so in summary, we're going to, we just talked about the-
Right now, what are we doing?
So, in summary, we're going to have a meeting on Monday, we will, if, I don't know, Diana or Bridget can get that list out to Melanie, you know, to Melanie and, to the rest of the committee, so they all see who we're looking at, and we can tell Colleen- Colleen that the, on the agenda for Monday will be, we're going to pick two or three, whatever people we decide. And then maybe, is it fair to ask Colleen to give us a basic, or maybe when we get these people on board, have a tutorial on how we got where we are and what monies we're looking
So again, that, we do want the whole executive committee that is in place right now voting on this?
Well, yeah, the committee plus, and the committee being our superintendent's, our finance officer.
Again, it's, if you're taking the owner's rep out of this and their staff, it's, so, Mel, Megan Renicki, myself, Dr. Serko, Eric Nielsen, and then the three board members. That's, that's the non-owner's rep members of that committee, basically. So, and those are all the district folks. So it'd be those individuals, I guess, making the decision.
The eight of us.
And I can send that out in an email, but it's in the
Is that what we're thinking?
Remember, it's not all or nothing. I think if you decided that because you do have contractors on here and people with experience, you might decide that you have an advisory board that looks at stuff. That's your second check and balance.
We have to make sure that we can, that we have to just make
Well, I mean, after, after we find out, we need to find out.
And that's the other thing, like Andrea brought up, is to have John look, or somebody look at, determine, is there a conflict of interest by having a contractor as, on the committee? So is that what you're saying?
Can we send an email out to John, ask him? I don't know who does that.
I, I would actually like to propose that because if David Price could look at it, just because he has dealt with some other things beforehand, I mean, we can maybe have John and David look at it, but I just feel like David has a little bit longer experience in looking at it, but maybe we can have both opinions. Just looking at that would be my request.
I agree.
Okay, so I, the list you want, you want David Price to advise you
Why doesn't
On who should select these people?
No, no, no. If, if any of these people could, would be a conflict of interest, I think we could, maybe Angela, could you just send that out?
Sure.
I mean
Oh, Angela's going to speak with David Price and make that determination?
Yeah, she could run this by John and David Price, and, and just say, would anybody on this list, would it be prohibitive for them to sit on this executive committee? And then just have them look at it and give us clarification, so Angela can email John and David.
I would, I would imagine, just in addition to that, I would imagine that maybe their first question would be like, what is the role of the committee? Because it might be hard for them to
Well, she could CC Brian or, or somebody else, too, on that if we need
Have you guys identified the, the role?
Well, I Well, they're going to be part of the existing, we're just adding three people to this, that's on there. So they're
I know, we talked about 12 different things, but not a side committee.
Yeah, their role would be no, their role would be no different than Diana's role, or Melanie's role, or my role, or Will, or Angela. They would just be part of, of basically being able to question our owner's rep, question the contractor, you know, build consensus on things that need to be decided, that's in the purview of that group to decide, so.
Sure.
So if you're not wanting the owner's rep group as part of those making the decision, where am I going to get my list to send this out? Because the owner's rep is the one that organizes the meeting and
Well, they can be aware of who these people are, they just won't have a say in who we pick.
I think, let me break it down. First of all, we need to run it by the attorneys to see if, are these people all good, or are some not? Then, on Monday, they're going to decide whether, are you picking two or three people, or are you guys creating a separate advisory? The executive committee there now will decide, I think, which vein they want to go to. Then, after they decide that, you'll know, Bridget, who also needs to be included in those emails, because they, if they decide to go with Plan B, that'll be a completely different advisory meeting, and nothing would change, and who needs to be emailed out, too. Does that make sense? Okay. So you'll know more Monday.
Yeah. So we're not going to really, I mean, we're probably not going to have time to do anything on, by Monday. I mean,
As far as picking?
For John and David to be able to
No.
Do all that.
So we wouldn't be able
This, this Monday is going to be business as usual. It'll be the next meeting where the changes will
That makes sense.
That makes sense.
Yeah, like, give everybody
That makes sense.
We got to have a little bit of time, we can't ask those guys.
No, 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 no.
Well, and in case you guys want to even have a phone call
And that'll be a different
Right.
Group that comes together to discuss that without the contractor and the owner's
No, that's good, that's a good plan, I think. Are you guys all okay with that? Will, Carrie?
Awesome. Okay, good. I think that's, all right, so board policies, I think we were just, again, kind of looking at maybe just a broad overview. I know we talked a little bit about this the other night at the work meeting, but
Really, really, kind of what process do you want to use around policies? We can do a couple of different ways. One way would be to, you know, like, have people come in groups, like, to two and ones, or whatever, and just, or to say, like, some of you will be the lead on some policies and some on other policies, and then that way, when it's presented to the board, you're kind of the expert on that particular policy. There's different ways to do it, but we can go through, a lot of them, remember, a new policy is usually triggered by change in legislation, or something going on in the system where you feel like we don't have that covered, so we need to do that. And so the policies are often written by CASB, and so then they kind of make sure that it's in compliance with the law, and then we look it over and see, do we have any concerns, is there anything we want to add? Do we think there's some holes in it that aren't, you know, covering all that stuff? So it's really about the process you want to use for adopting new policies. And we can kind of start with, you know, where we, like, the way we've done it is, we sometimes meet with small groups and go through a policy, and then, then, when it comes to the board, then some groups there have seen it before, or we can just send it out to people with an explanation of different pieces. So it sounds confusing the way I'm describing it, but the policies themselves are very clearly written by CASB and by, you know, through legal, you know, legal speak, so to speak, so that they really follow the letter of the law and are able to be interpreted and implemented in a way that makes sense.
So is CASB the only eyes on that legally?
No.
I mean, do we just trust them to do it, or, or do we also have our own legal counsel looking at those policies? Because I'm, I mean, I'm guessing that if CASB writes it, it's going to be from their vantage point. We may need somebody in
From the legal vantage point.
Right, but beyond that, I mean, that, the legal part of it is, whatever.
We have more, a lot more people, because the policies, if you go in there and look at our website, and the policies, it's broken down, for example, you know, all the B policies are boards, all the G policies are personnel, you've got your policies that go over curriculum. So our executive directors are constantly looking at these policies, and they're looking at the policies that fall within their department. And that's why, in the past, we've set up these policy meetings, and what they are, they're the department head, legal counsel, usually one to two board members, and this year, we've got policies, Carrie and Andrea serving on the committee. And so what, for example, what happens is a department head, maybe Patty, says, oh, okay, this is not, our policy is not following our procedures.
Right.
Okay, we need to go in and look at this and get this cleaned up. So she'll take our existing policy, and there have been times they've thrown our existing out and started from scratch, or taken the existing and gone through and redlined it. And they send it in and say, okay, here's what we're thinking, this is what we want to do. So we're like, did you take it past legal? Yep, we got it past legal. So, okay, let's have a meeting. So we hold the meeting, and like I said, the superintendent's there, board members, I'm usually there only because I work with the redline changes, and they siphon these through me. And then what happens at that meeting is, we generally go almost line by line to those policies, and say, well, is this redline really getting what you need? Is this really, this line here that's been in this policy since 2000, does that really apply anymore? You know? And so that's what happens at the policy meeting. Once that's refined, then it's brought to the board for first reading and then second reading. And we were doing this pretty much regular until we got to COVID. And then naturally, we were remote, things kind of went on hold. And so I know right now, there's two to three policies, one's HRs, one's Den's Marsh, and I think there's one other, and I apologize, I was going to go through my stack there on my desk, that we do need to get a policy meeting set in place, but also, we have the four we just brought forward for first reading the board needs to look at, at the February business meeting, to, or at the January meeting to approve. I've got five others that fall under that same law that was changed, that we need to bring forward for first reading and then second reading, that's probably going to take us to that February business meeting, because we don't want to give the board members, here, here's 20 policies, look at them, you know? So that's why I thought we would start scheduling
Just add just a little bit to what you said. Bridget, in a sense, we also may have, like, you choose to have John there, or David Price there, in other words, it's not unusual to have legal counsel there, as you're going through that kind of preliminary look before it goes to the board.
Yeah, yeah, legal's always at the policy meetings, yeah. And so my thought was, is I would look at February, and for sure, like I said, Crystal Schultz in HR is wanting to know when our next policy meeting is, and get something set up and going. So that's kind of the plan right now. But yeah, we do, they're, the directors are constantly going through these policies, whether it's, well, even the school of choice policy, we've changed that regulation. Now, policy tells us what to do, a regulation tells us how to do it. We've had to change that regulation almost every year, because we change the timeframe on when that school of choice is done. So.
Well, that answered my question, because I knew Carrie and I were on the board policies committee. So it sounds like if we can get back to the way it was pre-COVID, that it sounded like that was ticking along pretty good.
Yeah, and
That way, okay.
And the, the other problem is, though, is I just can't, I mean, I have, I'm at, everybody's at the mercy of the directors. And we had a lot of policies that came in with the marijuana and all that, and Tammy, or Tanya, was swamped with COVID. I mean, that's what she was focused on right there. So we've got a few of those we still need to go back through and look at with Katie and stuff, so.
Okay, no, I think that sounds good. So if there was something that was working well, I think we keep doing that. So let's, I guess, because that committee, I think, just meets as needed, right? The, the board policy committee that Carrie and I are on just meets, okay, so I guess as, as those come up, you'll just let us know?
Yeah, what we'll do is see what director it is, and we'll try to schedule meetings that will work with your time, the director's time, and depending on, sometimes we, it may be a two-hour meeting for you guys, but it's only the first 45 minutes for this director, 45 minutes for that director,
Yeah.
Because we may have more than one department we're looking at.
Okay, that sounds good. Any other question on board policies, or anything else that we want to, as far as moving forward? Okay, that's great. Brian, did you want to talk about your proposed organizational charts? And then I think he'll be able to answer any questions that any of us have on those.
So, again, this is not a board vote, or anything that's being required, but I just wanted to touch base. I know I've met with board members individually, and then sent out communication with, with documents going along with this, but just wanted to know if there was any questions folks had, or need any clarification, because timeline-wise, and again, this is really just dealing with the three positions that we need to post in January. And so while it doesn't need board vote, I just want to make sure that folks, that it's clear on those positions, and, and we have that support so that we can post those positions and move forward with the hiring process. One thing, I think, I can't remember if I mentioned the email or not, but in the past, when we've had senior level positions, we oftentimes include on the interview committee, at least one board member, and in the past, it's been the board president, so I don't know if I mentioned that before, that the board would be part of that interview process as well, before it ultimately came to the board for approval in the end. And so I worked with, with Nikki, and with Gee, and folks in HR to start coming up with a preliminary timeline for like, when those interviews would actually happen, who would be on those committees. And so really, this is just a check-in, to see if there's any questions, because we would start posting positions January 19th, otherwise.
How many positions are there, Brian?
So this, the only ones we're talking about right now, and again, we always are posting positions, but this is just positions that would be senior-level positions. So it would be replacing my position. Again, these wouldn't start till July 1, so this is all hiring now for something that would start later. So when I've moved into the super role, this would be replacing the assistant superintendent, and the information I shared with y'all is the job description on that one, that it's, it's been rewritten. And then the COO that we never replaced, so that was Phil's position that's been sitting there, and we never actually filled the position. And so that would be overseeing all those departments that Phil oversaw, except for finance separated out. And then, and then that chief academic officer position, which again, that's the one that I shared with y'all, and had a conversation about where it will be FTE neutral, so we're not adding any positions to the org chart, because it would be repurposing an existing position, so we wouldn't be adding any positions to do that. And it would be, have a pretty minimal impact on the budget. But that's a position we used to have in the district in the past, and the intent of that position would be to have more uniformity and collaboration between the departments that oversee, that directly impact schools. So again, that's the executive director of curriculum assessment, and all the folks that report to her, executive director of student services, and all the folks who report to her, executive director of technology, and all the folks who report to them, and then the site directors that oversee all the principals. So those departments would all be under one house, for lack of a better term, and would have somebody that would be overseeing them that could report back to me. And those, all those departments wouldn't have to come all the way up to the superintendent to get answers on things, they would have someone that's overseeing all them. So, but again, we're not adding any positions to the, the org chart because of the fact that I'm repurposing an existing position to do so. So, and again, I know I shared all this with you all before, but the intent really is for decisions to be able to be made quicker, more collaboration between some of those departments, and more clarity around those roles. We, again, the three job descriptions that I shared with y'all, the COO was changed because it does have different oversight. The assistant superintendent position is going to be utilized differently as well. And then that CAO is a position that existed before, but we updated the job description to match those departments that they'll be overseeing. So, so really, if you have any questions about it, or any clarification, I'd be happy to do that, but otherwise, I just wanted to say, like, because we're moving to post things pretty soon, so.
So, a couple of questions I have. So, those, those positions are, I mean, I know the budget was made this year, and they are not in the budget right now, right?
Which ones?
The positions that are, I mean, I know yours is, the assistant.
And COO is in there, too, because we just never replaced it. So that, that position's been in the budget, it's just never been replaced. And then again, if we, if it would have, the CAO is the only one that would be a new title. So one option would have been just create a new position, create a new budget line for that, and then put it in there. But trying to be mindful of, you know, the budget and not adding too much to that budget, I worked to try to find another position to repurpose to create that. So that's why we're not creating any new FTE. It would just be repurposing.
So how much of an increase do you expect there to be?
So, that's a good question. So there's no way to, I can't put an exact number on it, because you never know until you actually hire the individual. So the role that would be replaced is probably making somewhere around 130. Chief, the range for the chief position, and I can pull that up, let's see. And this is in that chart that I shared with y'all as well. So the, the range for the position that's, that's, would be replaced, again, is anywhere from 108 to 165, so the ranges are pretty big. But the, the individual in that, in that position, I think, is somewhere around 130. And so then the range for the CAO is anywhere from 129 to 195. So, and again, 195, when you talk about the high end of the range, I mean, Nikki might be able to share more about what exactly would qualify somebody to be on the very high end of that, but that has to do with experience within the positions and whoever takes that role on. So, so if you're looking at differences between the range, you know, maybe 15,000-ish, again, it's hard to guess, so.
So
So versus adding 100 and whatever thousand dollars to the budget. So it'd be pretty minimal impact to the budget, understanding that there is going to be some addition there, but compared to adding a whole new position.
Make it zero impact to the budget.
Make it zero impact to the budget.
So if you make it zero impact to the budget, then you're, basically, it wouldn't be the position that I'm trying to create. So you can't, because the position I'm, I don't want to use the word eliminating, repurposing, is not at the same level. So, but with that being said, there's a lot of things that happen when you go through a hiring process. Sometimes, we, we've had to do this in the past, you, depending on who gets the jobs, whether it's internal, external, so if there ends up being an internal hire, for example, we evaluate if we're going to replace the position they came from, or if it should be consolidated. So there, there could be potentially other areas where we find cost savings through this process. And then the other thing is, you know, this is something that we'll, we'll be doing yearly, is really looking at the org chart in general. I think looking at the org chart every year and really questioning whether it's efficient the way it is, if it's effective, or if we need to make changes. So there could be potential savings on the road. I just don't, I can't commit to that right this second, because I don't know what's going to happen through the hiring process, but we could realize some savings in other places as well. So my goal is to try to make it as minimal as possible. And again, not adding any new positions or FTE to the org chart, because understanding the context and, and not wanting to, to make it seem like we're trying to make ourselves top-heavy. You know, I shared with y'all as well, there's a, the chart that I analyzed, the org charts from other districts across the state that are similar size. And, you know, I know it's easy to perceive that, well, our district's top-heavy. Compared to other districts our size, we're really not. And so what ends up happening is you put a whole lot of stuff on a person's plate, and then they do a decent job at a whole lot of things versus doing a really good job at, at less. So I feel like this Chief Academic Officer will provide a lot of, again, streamlining things that are, for those departments that are directly impacting schools, and having more collaboration between those departments, because they are going to be impacting the schools directly. And so if we don't do that, yeah, I'd have to rethink some things on here, but it, it would be hard to make it completely cost-neutral, because it's not a, the position that's being repurposed is not at the same level, if that makes sense.
So, just a question I have, and I'm sorry I have to ask it, but how do we justify, if, if we fill these positions, so we have, we're good and the organization will start, but then how do we justify that to our parents and, and community members when we're trying to struggle to pay our teachers and struggling to get teachers and cutting programs out? And how do we justify that to them, saying, we're okay here, but I know we're slacking here? But, I mean, where, where do we come up with a happy medium?
Yeah, and, and again, that was the goal of this. The other option would have been, these, this position is not, just like, this would be great to have, I'd like to just add something or try, like, there's a purpose behind putting this in place, and I think it'll have a positive impact on schools and on student achievement in the end. So the other route would have been, I just want to add this position to the org chart, and then we try to go find over $100,000 to pay them and, and all that. So, so the justification on my end is that trying to find a way to not add a significant amount to the budget by trying to repurpose one of those positions. So that was the, that was the goal and the intent of, of doing that. And that's a tough one, right, because you're talking about people's, people's positions, you're talking about people's jobs, but trying to take a look at the org chart as, as it is currently and saying, where is an area that I think we could be more efficient by pulling back on a position, and then using that FTE and that, and that salary to go towards this other one, to make, have a minimal impact to the overall budget? And again, because we're going to be, the goal would be to analyze this every year. If, if this is in place, and then we're like, no, this isn't really working out, then we need to make an adjustment for the next year. It's not, it's not like a 20-year commitment to this. This is just, I think this will have a bigger impact on our schools and on achievement in the end, if we can have this in place. But I get what you're saying, I don't want to, I don't want to give off the perception that we're just willy-nilly throwing money around.
I just ask that because, you know, look, when we changed the mascot this week, it was, you know, oh, the board did this, and the board did this, and the board's stupid, and District 51. And I'm like, that wasn't a decision, we didn't sit here and say, hey, let's go with the shield. But that's all the blowback we've gotten, so everything we do, it comes back to the board, district decision. So I was just trying to figure out, you know, if it's something that, you know, not to, I mean, is it possible that we can do without Assistant Superintendent for a year? To see where we're at, to see where we're at, to build some of that stuff up, and take that money for the budget and put it somewhere where it's needed? Or do we have to have Assistant Superintendent? Do we have to have a Chief Operating Officer? Do we have to have, do we have to have these positions filled right now? And look at what we're lacking in, and put that where it needs to go? And that, that's just all I'm trying to ask.
You know, and that's, I think those are all fair questions and ones that are important to ask, most definitely. But I think the issue of the Chief Operating Officer, you know, there's not a system of our size that doesn't have one of those positions. When our COO retired, we thought, let's give it a whirl and see if we can get by without it. And we've done that, but it has been tough. It's been tough on that staff, because they really have had to carry the mail, so to speak. So I think that it's just almost impossible in a system our size.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for, I mean, just to, yeah, that's exactly what I'm looking for.
If I could add, and I think Brian mentioned this, Diana, that was a good point, is, is the jobs are going to get done, and we found out that without Mr. Anafrejo in there this year. But it has its price, people are paying, and then are we as responsive to our staff and our community, our kids? Because we're, we're not efficient with the folks where they need to be. And it, it seems, in, in talking to both Dr. Circo, Dr. Hill, that, you know, we, we've, have suffered some of the consequence of not having these positions. And then to repurpose positions, it sounds like, and again, we're, you know, you're the experts at this, of, of repurposing to be more efficient, to be more responsive, to ultimately provide the best for our kids to achieve, right? And our staff to, to be able to do that. And as Brian said, is if after some time we find they aren't efficient, or it's not working, then you go back and read, did I capture that right, Brian, or not?
Well, and to your point about the, that position in particular, so, yeah, I, that worries me a little bit, because we're already having conversations that happened earlier in this meeting about communication, and, and are we overs, are we having enough oversight over things? And are we making sure that things are getting done? You know, systems our size, in this state, not even just comparing across the nation, have three or four Assistant Superintendents. Like, we're pretty lean when it comes to that to begin with. So that would be a concern, just to be honest with you, with the workload of taking that position completely away. You know, I don't know, I, I'm not going to put words in Dr. Circo's mouth, but even this, this last couple of years of going through this pandemic, only having the superintendent in, in that role, I think, would be pretty taxing. So I'm not trying to make a case for, like, I've done some great job, but it's, you, you need some support at that level. And again, the way that I wrote the job description is, is, it's going to be utilized in a different way as well. And I'm hoping that you'll see an impact from communication amongst the board, communication with the public, with the, with the schools. And then also, and I, I got ridiculed for using the term "bird dogging" the other day, but, but bird dogging the strategic plan, and are we actually following through on the pieces of the strategic plan? And how are we reporting that out? So there's a lot of responsibility that's going to fall on that person, and that's going to be a pretty big job. Which means we got to do a really good job of going through that interview process and make sure we get the best candidate. And, and that's why the timing on this is important for me, because if we are going to post these positions, we're already behind on it. Other districts have already posted them, probably in December. So if we're trying to compete, we're a month behind already. And so today was just really just looking to answer any questions and get some direction, so hopefully that helps.
Yes, thank you.
Are you guys evaluating, when do, or I guess, when do you evaluate the administrative roles? So that as we're moving forward, you may have realized from this last year that you could either consolidate some. And again, I know we're talking about people's jobs, so I don't, I don't take it lightly. But again, like what Doug was saying, is when is that evaluation done? Where, you know, what Angela might be saying is, there may be a, a net zero, because we're finding some ways where we're either consolidating, or we're just realizing that there was a role that is just not playing out the way we thought it was? Or, so I guess, when, when does that happen, and what does that look like?
Well, so I'm speaking, kind of moving forward, like, that's not been my role. So I don't oversee all the departments in the district, so that's something that I would have to be doing moving forward with, is, is meeting with those executive directors from each of those departments and saying, let's take a look at your department you oversee, and have those conversations on a yearly basis of, are there areas? Not even necessarily are we trying to find areas to cut, it's just, is the structure that we currently have, is it meeting the needs that we have, I guess, is, is what I would say. So, and that really, again, is the intent of why I even looked at some of these changes, was I feel like there's some needs that haven't been met, and this could help with that. So those are the discussions that I, I would like to have, you know, July 1 and on, with those department leads, of saying, are there areas that we're not being efficient enough? Or do we have too many people doing that job? And, but with your, to what you said, though, it is people. So being mindful of that, but again, it's also, it's taxpayer dollars, and we got to make sure we're being efficient with those. So, so that would be something I, I would like to do on a yearly basis, and, and we can give updates on that, too.
And you know, four years ago, we did cut five admin, senior admin positions. And, you know, it, I would say that one of them, I think, is one of the ones that we're looking at bringing back, because you find out that you're just not as efficient as you could be, that there was a reason those positions were there. But we do try to be really aware, and, you know, Tim can tell you that, when we're looking at salaries, obviously, our ability to have competitive teacher salaries is, you know, directly related to how large our staff is overall. So it's really, we try to be pretty fiscally conservative. And like, for instance, with our COO job, we just said, we're going to do all we can to hang in there without having to have it, because it's, it's a pretty high, highly-paid job. But we wanted to make it through, we didn't really, it's, it's a little bit hard to do with the number of departments it supervises. But I guess what I want you to know is, we've really looked carefully at being fiscally conservative along the way.
And to, to the point that's been brought up, I, I would, just a little historical perspective, prior to the pandemic, which really threw everything up in the world. Our, our board had, particularly Tom Parrish was driving force behind this, had asked our district leadership over time to really evaluate, not necessarily people, but the positions. Are they, you know, when they were instituted maybe 15, 20 years ago, are they still important today? And if so, great, and if not, can we repurpose them or whatever? And so that was work that I, I know the previous board looked at, just like you're bringing up today. And it got sidetracked, obviously, with everything going on. But I, what I hear from Dr. Hill is come, and, and Dr. Circo, is in the future, that's going to be looked at, is how can we be more efficient, more effective in, in serving our, our people? So I, I think, is that about right?
Yeah, and again, and I, this is not, I'm not asking for a board vote on anything, I just wanted to be able to answer some questions for y'all and make sure that we're clear on the direction. Because the next steps would be, I've still got some departments that I need to go out and talk to about it, because again, if you're talking about eliminating a position to create another position, you want to be careful to not put the cart before the horse on that. So just to share that information with folks. And then, again, we would post positions on the 19th. And then Nikki and her department have worked on a timeline that we can share on when would we keep those positions open, until what date? Screening process, and then a committee interview, and then final decision dates. And then again, these would be positions that would be approved, but then not, they wouldn't actually get to start until July 1. And so we, I can share all that with y'all as well, but it's kind of a domino effect once we get this thing moving to the next step, so. But again, try to really hard to, to be mindful of the questions that y'all are asking right now. I mean, that was on top of my mind as well, is I don't want to create a bunch of extra-budget things in there that are going to, you know, cause a bunch of expenses. And so I feel like this was the most effective way of doing that, was repurposing a position versus adding a completely new position. Again, feeling like this is a necessary thing for us to move forward, so.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I was just going to kind of summarize my understanding of the conversation. So it sounds like we've, you know, we cut out some top-heavy positions a few years ago. We had this retirement, so we tried to see if we could do without it. We are understaffed at, you know, kind of upper management relative to other districts our size. We're realizing that we do need some of those positions. We have found, you know, based on our current experience of having a super and an assistant super, how much work both of them do. So it seems like the, the position itself is, is, has been justified with, from within. It seems comparable, I mean, we're still lean compared to other districts. You've worked hard to make sure that we're not adding another position, and I think y'all appreciate that. And the, the, the cost is ensuring that we can get the right person with the right experience at the slightly higher level than the position that we're repurposing.
Yeah, and, and as far as salaries go, and I, I'm going to try and explain it, and Nikki will tell me I messed it up. So with any position in the district, we have, G goes out and does salary studies, and basically looks at other comparable districts within the state, and what are they paying for these like positions? And then that's where they create those ranges. And then, and then we, when we hire an individual, they decide where they fall in that range based off of experience and probably other things as well. So I'm looking back at Nikki so she can, is she shaking her head or not? So, so yeah, so these are, this have already all been vetted, and the ranges have been, have gone through that process. So that's where those came from, yeah, and it is a comparison. Because you're right, if you, if you post an Assistant Superintendent position or a COO in one district, that's a certain size, and then you post one in another district that's the same size, and they're paying way more over here, guess where folks are going to probably want to end up going? So you have to be competitive in the market, and we, and to your point, with teachers as well. Like, not overlooking that at all. We tried really hard last year to, to give that 10% raise to teachers, and I know that's something that we are continuing to look at, is how can we continue to, to help teacher salaries? So that's, that's not, those are, those are happening at the same time. That wouldn't be pushed aside. So we want to make sure that everybody's paid competitively and, and within the system, so.
All right, that's great. I had to pull up your updated org chart, I had like the two old ones, and so I was pulling up your PowerPoint that you went over with us some time back. So I can say on paper, it looks much cleaner, so. So we're good, on a good start, yeah. All right, so I guess next steps, is that going to be presented to the board to vote on? Or what, what are our next steps with this?
So, because, again, because this isn't a vote. This is more trying to provide transparency, so that you don't just see a bunch of positions posted a couple of weeks, and you're like, where do these come from? So, but the board ultimately has, I mean, you vote on all positions in the district. So, so I think in the timeline, we said that it would ideally be brought to the board, those positions, did we say March? Is that when it was? So, and again, the, the goal along the way too, is that, I mean, you're going to, if you don't know this yet, you're going to be on some of the interview committees, and so, so y'all will be kept updated along the way too. But the process really kicks off the 19th by posting positions. We keep them open, trying to pull up the, so we, like, we'll keep them open for a couple of weeks. We've also talked about doing, we do surveys out to different departments and, and staff to ask for different traits they're looking for in those positions. Then we have a time where we'll review applications, which would be kind of mid-February. Then we screen interviews, and then we have inter, actual committee interviews, which is made of a very large committee, which, which would include board president, is around the end of February. And then those candidates hopefully selected and brought to the board by the 15th of March, so that they can basically make plans that you're going to be taking on a role on July 1. But they wouldn't actually start till July 1, so.
Okay, great, that's a good update, so. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to clarify, when he says, they'll, once the positions are hired and they'll be brought to the board for approval, that's one of those consent items you do every month, that personnel form? So that's why that's brought forward now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, on to our next item, District Legal Counsel. So obviously, this was brought, brought up in December. And so at this point, it was just more of kind of an update and making sure that we can ask questions or get on the same page concerning getting numbers for both in-house counsel and for the contract counsel that we have, which you guys, or Dr. Circo and Dr. Hill have been getting that information together. And then just kind of wanted to throw this out for, you know, a bit more of a discussion, so that we could be on the same page, so. Just kind of clear the air from that topic from December's meeting.
Thank you, I think I would go back to the first, so I can send out the, you know, there's, I, I found like four different guidebooks of how to approach this. And, you know, I think, I think our very first question, which we won't obviously discuss here, but I think the very first question is like, is this a personnel issue, or is this not a personnel issue? And if it's a personnel issue, we need to treat it as such and deal with it as such. So I think that that needs to be very clearly defined. If it is a personnel issue, let's just deal with it. If it's not a personnel issue, what exactly is the question? Is the question, are there cost savings if we go out of house versus in-house? I think we already have the answer to that. If, if that's not the question, that, yeah, I'm just like, I'm just curious, what exactly is the question? And what are we trying to accomplish?
Well, I, I think it's, it could potentially be a combination of those. One kind of precludes the Um, what, one kind of precludes the other in that, um, I'd like to have information from a longer period of time of, you know, prior to in-house counsel, what did it look like? Because the challenge we're having right now is with in-house counsel, we, COVID hit, right? And then every, lots of things were shut down. And so I, I would like to have a better feeling to know, it may appear to be a cost savings right now, but, but has it really been? Because literally courts were shut down for, you know, several months. And so I think one of them is just wanting to be able to get some information ahead of time, um, and then to assess some of the other information as well, so.
If I could, were you done?
Yeah.
And, and that's where, you know, where I was coming from, from the beginning. And, and I think it's a fair question. I, I know when we started this, uh, the, the in-house counsel, not, not knowing at that time that was going to be Mr. Williams, but the, you know, Dr. Circo at that point gave us, the board at that time, the rationale and reasoning behind that move. All made sense. But, but I fully expected, I'm sure she did and everybody else, that at some point in time, we're going to go back and evaluate that. Was that, as you're bringing up, Andrea, did, did, did we realize a cost savings? Whether it wasn't just because of that, it was because of response time to our staff? Uh, you know, to really analyze that. And that's kind of what, all I was getting back in December is, if, it's a fair question to ask. Let's, let's see how effective or ineffective or whatever it is it's been. And aside, because there's more factors than just costs. There is, you know, our, is, is it being effective to our, with our staff and community? And if, if, you know, the old chart, if it, yes, it's all working, then, as you said earlier, if it's working, let's not fix it. Going back to, um, we were, yeah, if it's not broke, don't fix it. But if it isn't, then is it a, a position matter or is it a personnel matter? If it's, yeah, the position's great, we just don't have the right person, that, that, that's a one question. And if it's, if it's the, the position, it's not being able to handle what we need to do. And then at that point, the, the arrows would point to, okay, let's do it, uh, the RFP and, and look out, out of district. But I, I think there's that process of, of going through to analyze where we are currently. Like we've talked about, you know, in your situation with your org chart, let's analyze the, where we can repurpose, where we can save. I, I think that same type of mindset should go towards this. And then I think we also have to be sensitive in all of our discussions about this. Um, about, we are still talking about, uh, a personnel matter, a person who is a district employee that should be treated just like we would if it was a principal or a teacher or a custodian. And there may be things that these discussions may need to go to executive session. And again, that would be something, uh, we'd, we'd have to get, um, you know, advice on how to do that. So, uh, that, that's all I was getting at. I think you were suggesting is, let's look at the questions we're trying to answer. It sounds like the first one is, is this, is this an, has this been effective for our district? Okay, fair question. And then let's get that answer. And I haven't heard, I mean, I heard some cost savings, but to Angela's point, is, or your point, is that because COVID and we didn't, the courts were closed? Or is it a real savings? I, I have heard anecdotally, staff come to me personally, you know, and say, we love having that in-house counsel. We can call them, they're right there, um, so.
Every, every one of them just nodded their heads, so.
So, so it's that kind of analysis to see, i- is, is that working well? Okay, great, uh, if it isn't, is it because it's bad to have that position or because we don't have the right person that? So there's a lot of questions asked before we, and, and thank goodness, we have time. Right now, we have counsel secured through July 1st, right? Uh, our current counsel, that's our contract, and we can look at that point. And we have some time between now and then to really give it a thorough, uh, analysis. Now, who does that? I guess that could be HR, that could be our superintendent's office, it could be a, a little committee to, to really, our, our association, because they're involved with this, to, to really give it a thorough analysis. And maybe that's through the documents you've looked at. There, there are processes already established, we don't have to reinvent the wheel on that.
Well, no, I think that, I think that your point is excellent. And that's kind of like a pre-step of analyzing what you currently have. Because honestly, all of the other, every document I read was assuming you don't have a system, that you don't have a system in place already that you're trying to put, so. No, I think your point is, is, is exactly right. Like, we need to, you know, figure out how this is working for us, what the parameters, what it means to work or not work, what those metricses are, and then get that, if that feels important.
Well, I would say, we've also discovered that, I mean, we did save a lot of money by using our own in-house counsel, which we had hoped to do. But we also found out that on certain situations like special education courses or lawsuits, things like that, we needed to bring in other, um, you know, so we used, you know, the firm that we had before, David Price's firm, and some of his staff members because of their expertise in, um, special education. So we found that overall, we did save dollars, but that it's, it was, neither one of them is a one-size-fits-all type of solution, that you still need some support services.
Maybe that gets to the point, we, we talked, there's so many parallels to other things we're doing. When we talked about the executive committee having Colin give us a tutorial where we are. And that's the same thing, I, I think, what I hear us asking, can we have a, a picture of what's a current status? How we got there, how it's effective? You know, we're hearing things, how it's being shared, all those kinds of things that, that we, after, what, it's been almost two years now, a year and a half.
Yeah, really.
Uh, that we, it's a fair question to ask at this point to say, let's look at that. As, as we should down the road with all these positions. You know, if it's a legal counsel or a CFO or, you know, uh, all those kinds of things are good questions to ask to have our, because we are a lean organization, so we can't afford any inefficiencies. So I hope that makes sense.
Definitely, we try to be really fiscally conservative on a lot of things like that. And I, I hear, I still believe we will, even if we utilize, you know, local firms to help augment our own in-house, um, services, we still will save, I think, at least $200,000 to $300,000.
Would there be a way to do, um, because I, I do want to be delicate that, you know, bordering on it being a personnel thing versus just maybe a, a strategic thing? But I, in some way, they start to kind of go hand in hand. Because what I'd like to know, um, is if we could do like an anonymous survey of people who maybe really utilize, um, in-house counsel, um, where they could give the feedback of whether they feel both are good, or one's good, one's not good, one's not good, the other one's good. Do you, do you see what I'm saying? Is I'd like to, I, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but I think for the people that are utilizing that quite a bit, it would be, it would be helpful for me to know if like, I mean, if they all think that all of it's fine, then that's, you know, that's something to consider. But if there's other issues, and then also just seeing like, um, you know, is there a peak in other things happening now that we have in-house counsel that we're maybe not, um, we didn't have before? Or, you know, and how are things handled? Because like you're saying, all the special ed stuff still goes back to the previous firm, which my understanding is that is the biggest amount of, of legality that we typically have in the district is our special, um, ed issues. Um, maybe, uh, you know, maybe some personnel stuff as well. So I guess I would just kind of like, and then I asked for this too, is I wanted a breakdown of what, what does our in-house counsel do? And what is our contractual, I guess, or counsel doing? To have a basis of understanding of, of, of what each one is doing.
You know, I, I think that's great. I mean, that, what you're really asking, and, and in this case, we have a department of one, right? We have a department of maintenance, all these things, but the department of one, so it, it is a sensitive issue. But is, is maybe that's something, uh, I'm ignorant of. Would CASB be able to help in, in, in developing a process or, or having a, a third party come in? We've done this with other things. I know historically, when we've looked at, uh, operations in our district, we've hired outside sources to really kind of give us a breakdown of how efficient, you know, to answer the questions you've brought up, Andrea. I, I don't know if that's, because I, part of that is, how do we do this internally? Is that an HR thing or what do you think?
Yeah, I think that actually, my first question is, and again, maybe we don't have to review this part about here, but like, what is our current review process? So, you know, so I think that you're getting at like one, one way to review the personnel, but we need to understand what is the current review process? And what has that feedback been? And what, you know, what, what do we know right now to inform what questions we need to be asking?
I think there's also some other variables that need to be factored in that we, so we haven't done that comprehensive study. Um, I think we can certainly do that. In terms of, like I said, when you add in the pandemic and different situations that met, so we may have had an increase in special needs issues that we would not have had or did not have before the pandemic. So we really need to sit down and analyze all those pieces and parts. As I said, I believe either way, we would be saving, um, a significant amount of dollars versus a external firm. But I believe we can be efficient and hopefully break down some of those costs using an internal and, um, as well as a, you know, as a ser, uh, an attorney's office that's in our area.
So I, I guess, to your point, everybody's point here, I'm, I'm going back to, forgive me, I'm, these things conjure up, okay. I remember we did, you know, when, when you came in and replaced Dr. Happenstall, right? There was you, and I remember, uh, Nikki did a analysis and gave us the board of feedback on where we are and positions and savings and all those kinds of things. I, I, I think that's kind of what we're asking for is, is, is for you all, if it's with HR and stuff, to come up with a process, um, of some sort that gets to the questions we're asking. Because right now, we're, we're, we're looking at, okay, do we keep what we have? Do we change? Do, you know, what do we do? But we need some direction and guidance, and we're, we're not equipped to do individual surveys or, that's not our position to do that, but certainly internally, and maybe that's, and Nikki knows HR laws and requ, you know, those things. And it may be one, we can do this, but we need to hire outside to evaluate, I don't know. Is it, am I capturing what we're trying to say here? Is, I, I think what our board's trying to say is, we'd like to have an analysis of our, of where we are currently, what's our current look, and then bring that back to us. And then the board can say, you know, that, that looks pretty good, or, gosh, it looks like some changes need. Or you may come with recommendations based on what you've learned, uh, and you can share those with the board. Because that, that's what I look at your role is, you and Dr. Hill and, and the staff is helping bring us along so we can make informed decisions. Did I capture that or not?
Yeah, because like I said, it's, it's, it's harder to just say it's one or the other until we kind of are looking at the process, you know, and, and getting the information, so, yeah.
So when, who, who does an evaluation of like, if we say, we'll say, even Mr. Price or Mr. Williams, if it's something, if we think it's a performance problem, are we the ones?
Their direct supervisor would do that. So for instance, for Mr. Williams, that would be me.
Hmm.
So just, it, with any of the positions, the person who supervises them is their direct, I mean, who evaluates them is their direct supervisor.
So if it's a personnel problem, so if it's something, say, he's worked on, on team projects with us, and we feel that the job is just not being done, we talk to you about it, and then you, how does that work?
Yeah, I mean, we would go from there then and look at whether or not we believe that, I mean, what are the actions that we think are needed?
And, you know, to your point, Will, really, the only person we supervise is that. We, we don't supervise maintenance, we don't supervise Bridget, we don't supervise, because, we, we supervise the superintendent's position. And, and then, so if that comes up, that can be, you know, Dr. Circo, we need you to look at special ed, or whatever it may be. That, that, that's the extent of our role in personnel matters. Am I right, Nikki? Is that, I guess Nikki knows everything, so. We're always looking at Nikki, right?
I think the clarifying question though is, is if we hear something from the board standpoint, I think it's just always funneling it through to the superintendent. Because then they, either they're the direct supervisor of that employee, or they'll notify the director of that employee. Yeah, exactly, okay.
Yeah, it's really, I, I think that's an excellent point, is that the idea is if there's a concern that you have, you channel it through me, and then we figure out who needs to be the one figuring it out and bird dogging the issue.
So, so is it fair to say, I, I want to misrepresent, what I think I'm hearing is that we're asking our administrative office and, and departments to come back to us with the process you're going to look at to evaluate it, and then present to us that information plus maybe any recommendations? Is, is that kind of what we're saying or not?
Yeah, no, I think that, I think that's.
And then we could decide where to go from there. I mean, because as I said before, the RFP is maybe step 10, and we're still looking, actually, step 1 is kind of what we're doing right now, is so 1 point A is, is doing this directive to the board.
We were, I, I was asked this question just, I don't know, a few days ago or, or whatever, when the news station decided to do, um, a piece on it. We, we are, that, that whole thing has been put to rest at this point anyway, as far as needing an RFP and, and going out and looking and, and doing, starting over with that. And I, I think you're exactly right, what you said about, we, we would like some evaluation of this, of, of it done. Um, again, I, I really believe it's apple, I've seen the numbers. Um, Melanie gave me the breakdown of, of what we spent and all of that. But it wasn't apples to apples. I mean, with COVID, we don't know. We've not paid the in-house counsel, and then, so we, we really need this last year with the courts being open and things being a little bit more back to business as usual. We need to start to compare those real numbers. I agree that everybody has talked about in-house counsel is, is incredibly convenient and useful that way. Um, but I would like some, I, I think it's good as we move into either renewing contracts or then putting it out to bid or whatever we may be doing. Um, it would be great to have that evaluation done sooner rather than later, so that we can see what that looks like.
Great, any other questions or comments on that? All right. All right, so we have just a couple more items, future board coffee dates and locations. Um, I think we can confirm up those dates. And then I think we had discussed at the one board meeting, um, working at, kind of we're moving from one end of the valley to the next, um, and meeting at some of our schools.
Palisade.
Yep, January 15th at Palisade High School, right?
Right.
Yeah, and I need to find out, um, who will be attending.
I will be there.
I just need to make sure we've got one, okay?
I'm, uh, yeah, Palisade's my hood, I'll be there.
The other question is, since it's on a Saturday and it's one of our facilities, I need to make arrangements to have that facility open. So I need to find out, do you want security there? Because if so, our security personnel could open the building. If not, then I'll make arrangements at the building administrator. I understand the last time somebody did call and ask for security.
I don't think it hurts anything.
Yeah, and I would just say, don't go, like, we need to, I cannot be at this meeting, but we need to.
Absolutely, that, I think that needs to be standard process. I agree, Carrie.
Saturday, January 15th. Well, you guys could pick what time you want to do it. If there's a time that works, I mean, I think it should be, we try to keep it around the same time so the community knows. But if there's times where it may be better for certain board members, I think.
Then we can make that adjustment. So can I just, uh, point out a couple of things? Um, Andrea and I did the last one, and we were there two hours, and it was really, it was a lot. Doug's over there going, yep, it is. So I think two hours is, is enough. You know, it gives everybody a chance to speak, and we had a large group. I thought it was a large group, I mean, I think we had 30, 40 people in there.
Yeah, we, yeah.
Yeah, so, but I mean, and, but everybody had, I would say it wasn't a teeny crowd to where, well, it was easy for everybody to get to speak or, or have conversation because it was a small group. It was a good-sized group, and so I felt like everybody had adequate time to have.
Well, by the time we show up early and then you have people that want to talk to you.
Yeah.
I think it, it pushes two and a half, three hours by the time, I think I finally was able to get out of there, which is fine.
I'd agree.
Um, but I, I do think, um, you know, Director Jones, if there's a time that would work better, I could probably make the 15th work as well, um, I know.
What I was gonna, just interrupting just a little.
Go ahead.
15th, and it may have no impact, that is a holiday weekend with, you know what I'm just saying? I wonder, it, it's a good day, but you may have a lot of people, hey, we, we can, we're going to take away as a family. So I don't know if another Saturday, look, that just doesn't affect me, I don't have any holiday weekends, but, um.
I have it currently posted the 15th at 9:00 AM, so I will need to change that.
I think we, I don't think it's a huge problem. I'm, not everybody comes to everyone anyway, so I, I would just leave it the same in either 11, you know, 9:00 to 11:00. And I don't see any problem with doing an afternoon one, once in a while, if that works out better for everybody.
Will, are you able to do that one, or? Okay.
So what are our thoughts moving forward for February, March, April, and May? That would be the next four months, and then we go into summer break.
We just do time.
I'm just looking more for location and stuff.
February, what if, in February, we popped up to Orchard Mesa Middle School?
That'd be great.
So we kind of go from Palisade up to Orchard Mesa, and then maybe we can come.
Could come back here, we could go.
Or maybe just an elementary school in town, or, I don't, we, I think, I'd. don't know, I think somebody had mentioned Orchard Mesa Middle School.
They did.
I like doing our schools, because I think it highlights the community actually coming into the school buildings.
So then I'd like to do maybe one out Fruta Direction.
Yeah, we could go Orchard Mesa Fruta and then come back in.
Yeah, something, just to, just to really move it around, so that it's a little bit more convenient locations for people in different-
Maybe Monument-
You might be able to come if you're in their town.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
We could do the high school, or we could do Monument Ridge, or-
I need to check and see, I don't know, some of our elementary schools, the cafeteria tables have those little tables-
Oh, that's right.
They don't work too well with the-
Come on, little chairs.
Oh, I love it.
That's fine.
We may have to do like the Fruta 8, 9 building.
Maybe what you could do, Bridget, maybe put a feeler out to administration-
Yeah, who wants to host it.
And find out what schools, what their calendar is, and what days might look good at 8, 9 school, or the high school, and that can help us schedule those. But for the meantime, we have the one in Palisade, Orchard Mesa, that's the next two months, that's-
Two months, yeah, yeah. So that, that works for me.
I'd be willing to host one in Gateway.
What's that? I can't hear you.
Oh, I see.
I'd be willing to host one in Gateway.
Gateways?
Yeah, I didn't hear, still didn't hear.
Okay. But like, any farther away ones, or like Loma, you know, I'd be willing to look at like far, or far-
Like, you would be willing to attend that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, I, I would love to see us get each, every, each and every area at least once. Yeah, that'd be great.
Well, and something else you may want to consider, in the past, some of our board coffees, we've invited specifically, set for, and we put it on kind of the agenda that this is conversation to have with staff, conversation to have with teachers, conversation, you know, so we invite specific staff members to join those.
You're right.
So that's something to keep in mind for down the road.
We have, it's, we have had them before, where we had some specific to substitute. So that way, when people come in, that, not that they can't talk about other things, but it's more specific, hey, we want to talk about whatever, whatever, special ed issues or substitutes always come up, so.
Yeah, just something to think about.
You can do the 15th. Okay, Will and I will be attending in Palisade.
I'll try, I just can't tell you right now.
That's okay, that's okay.
I likely could be there, I'll just double check, so, okay.
And I wonder, what's your experience, is it, is it more effective to just have a couple of board members there, is it more effective to have more?
Well-
How is the conversation better for the community?
Um, you know, the ones I've been to, usually it's one or two board members.
Okay.
Just because people's schedules don't always work out, so I've, I've never been one where we've had all five of us.
Just feels like it could get a little convoluted if there were-
Too many.
Too many, maybe? I don't know.
It's intimate with, you know, you get, at least a two is good, I think two to three is probably great.
I think this last time, I mean, we didn't do much of the talking.
We really didn't.
It was a, it was a lot of listening, unless we were asked specific questions, but it was interesting to see the community actually conversed-
With each other.
Quite a bit more, when it came down to it. So, I mean, if anything, it's almost more of a listening tour, and then we can answer specific questions, but I think it's just hearing, hearing the heart of our community, and, you know, because we had some groups of parents there, we had some groups of teachers there, we had some community members there, because they talked about suicide prevention, and even dealing with, you know, the aftermath, so it was interesting, I mean, we had a wide gamut of-
We had a great time, it was, it was, it was interesting, it was, I think it was informative both directions. Actually, it was informative in a lot of different directions, because the community got to, it wasn't just directed towards us and us answering questions, but more the entire community talking to each other, which was a little different than when they're here.
One thing we talked about too, remember, we could even do a virtual thing too, because that, that's convenient for a lot of people too, I mean, it's not that intimacy, but you, you might get a lot of people there for, and you could do an evening virtual one or something like that.
Well, that's what I was wondering with Bridget's suggestion of like, if it was specific to maybe some of our teachers, or things like that, I'm sure they covet their weekends, you know, but maybe, maybe if we did a virtual on some of these specific things with, because I feel like that would need to be an additional meeting, because I know when the community comes out, they, they may have a lot of questions, and we did have a handful of teachers at the last meeting that talked a lot about, you know, reading curriculum, that was really interesting. So maybe, maybe we could always do like a evening, yeah, virtual one, where any of our teachers, one, they could be home, because if they have families, but then they could pop on for an hour, hour and a half, and just kind of talk about things. So maybe we can add an additional one here or there for those.
I'd love to do that.
Okay, we'll look at that as, maybe, I don't know if MVA wants to maybe get some guidance on-
I'm happy to, I'm happy to add, I will just say this, that everybody is exhausted, and to add another meeting is really hard, and then on top of that, for the district, I know, for the three, four new board members, really, we're really coming up on a time of years, starting in March, February and March, where we're all buried in negotiations. You all will be buried in negotiations, we will be, and then our, our teachers, our MVA will be involved in that process, so to add another meeting is sometimes a little difficult. And then I'm asking teachers now, you know, four nights a week, we have meetings with the teachers, and our teachers work at 7:00 in the morning, and so on, we don't get open until eight in the morning, and so, while I'm glad to try to figure out a good time to do that, sooner rather than later is probably better, because we're getting to mark, it's very difficult.
So, just if I could get some clarification, or clarify myself, I would just really love to give all of the teachers, whether they're member, the union members or not, an opportunity to just have a casual coffee type, you know, gathering, whether it's virtual, or whether it's in person, I personally would like to do both. I would like to have it be virtual, and offer people the option to sit in a room and look in your eyes. Just, just, just to hear them as a group, again, not, maybe four people show up, that's fine. It's probably the four that need to be heard the most, for whatever reason, and I'm totally good with that, but I would really, it's something that we talked about, that I talked about in my campaigning with teachers, that they wanted to be able, and have an invite, be invited to sit down with board members, and get eye to eye with us, and just be heard. So I would really love to do that, and, and, you know, if it, if it works out, believe me, I get that they are exhausted, and that their plate is super full. I will put my hat on that rung as well, you know, so.
Yeah, Director, I'll just add this, while we have members, right, we have 800 employees, 100, we are, we're very proud to say that we represent all covered employees-
Right.
1,350 covered employees in the district, and when we say we are worried about teachers, I'm not worried about the 800 teachers, I'm worried about the 1,400. And when I say I want to sit down and come up with a schedule that works for all of us, it's not just 800 members, it's all of us. We represent every covered employee, whether they're a member or not, they're important to me, because they, they do the work of the district, we do the work of the district, we're in the classrooms with the kids. So, so when I say that I'm worried about adding something to the plate, it's because I talk to teachers every day, and, so our job, our job, contrary to what you hear in the public or on the news, is to make sure that all of the employees in this district that are covered underneath the MVA contract, within the district, are of contract, all of our contracts, are treated fairly, have good base pay, we talked about that, right, good benefits, but on top of that, emotionally right now, that, and stress level, there's one thing that has to do with, we talk about internally, so when other groups, including the board, or just, just other groups in the district, say we want to add something to teachers' plate, I have to always step back and go, is it the right thing to do for all covered employees? I think this is, I'm just cautioning them, we should probably sit down and really come up with a time that works. If you want to hear from everybody, we want it to be a time that doesn't conflict with negotiation steps and all of that.
Got it.
That was my comment.
No, thank you for that clarity.
I want to hear me talk about teachers, and people in my organization, that I'm not talking about just members, I'm talking about every single covered employee in the district, counselors, teachers, and psychologists.
Great.
Those are covered employees, and we care about every one of them, whether they take use for-
Yeah, and I think my clarification was just, if you could get feedback, if there's a time that would, would work for them, if it needs to wait until later, that's fine, I would just, you know, we're here, we're here when they're ready, so if you, if, if now is not the right time, then we totally honor that. I would, I guess I would just like to know, I want them to know that we're willing to put one on, and if you can get that information, and if it's, doesn't happen until summer, next school year, whatever, that, that's totally fine, so.
Door's open.
We have our big, we have our big meeting next one tonight, I will put that out to our building reps, and I'll make sure that they know that this is a question they need to ask everybody, all, and we'll get some times that kind of work, and which you might find is relevant, you teachers, they may say, maybe do it at night, and then high school teachers might say, I'll do it on weekends.
Maybe we do, yeah, separate ones or something like that, sure.
Yeah, we're trying to get feedback from everybody, I mean, we do, internally, it's really easy to hear from 800 people, it's a little bit more difficult for us to get every opinion, but we can do that in the building, so I'll, I'll make that happen.
Perfect.
I was just saying, we will make that happen, if elementary school teachers want it at one time, we will do whatever.
Sure, that's great, I'll pass that information along, and we'll start working on it.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, so we're good for future board coffee dates and locations, do we have any other discussion that anybody's burning to have?
I would just say, I would just say, I am really excited to hear about student achievement, and how we're doing, and how the students are doing, and what we need to start thinking about, and how to even think about student achievement. I would say that I would love to request that that be added for a discussion, for a board meeting at some point, student-ish, that's it.
So, the other thing, we don't have to decide it right now, but I sent everybody a synopsis of that, of that board pilot training that we're able to be a part of, that's a year-long deal. We, they want to start doing that in February, so I think I sent everybody an email that just kind of gives an outline of what the first training would be about, and then just, if folks can, Bridget maybe can work with you all on finding some dates that work, but that way we can schedule it with the facilitators of that, that training, so.
Can I stop you? So is that, that's a grant that you got, can you just-
So, it is, it's not, we haven't officially been awarded it, but the, the folks that are going to work with us on it already reached out about scheduling things, so we're going to get the money. So basically, it's, it's through the EZ Grant, it's a state grant, it provides up to $10,000, they haven't told us officially we got it, or how much money, but, and it, and it's an opportunity to have a, a year-long board training, board and administration going through it together. Again, I hope it'll provide some clarity for all of us on, on just this job, and what does it entail, and, so the first two sessions, in the first phase, are facilitated by Dr. Jorgensen, and then Matt Cook at the state level, and they'll come in and do some, some training with, with all of us, and it sounds like the first two sessions are three hours each. So they usually suggest doing it as like a separate, kind of like what we did today, like a separate retreat that they run, otherwise you're tacking it on to the end of a board meeting when everybody's already tired. Yeah, I heard a no, and I agree.
No way, done by the end of it. We would be, it would be worthless.
So I think in, you know, the sooner we can get it scheduled, the better, because they can come in, and I think it will help with, with a lot of the stuff that we're working on. So anyways, long story short, I sent it out to everybody, and if, maybe we're going through Bridget, if we can find dates that work for everybody to have, because they have to come out from the front range and do those trainings with us, and so they, we got to work with their schedules as well, so, this is more of a reminder that I sent an email out about it.
Can we get the dates that would work best for them, and then we could all give feedback on what could work for us?
Yeah, I'll-
I think that would narrow it down much.
Yeah, if we can know when they would like to be here, and then we can all look at our schedules.
Yes.
Great job, almost getting that.
And then, something that I wanted to, kind of, kind of near and dear, that we've been trying to get going, is, I mean, as we all well know, there's a big bullying problem going on here, and with our schools, and I know we used to have a committee back in the day, and we've been talking about it, and I've talked with Brian and a couple of people, trying to figure out what happened to it, or if it's still going, or how we can get it back. So Tam and I had just talked, and I'm looking forward to trying to get that committee back going, to figure out, you know, what's going on with our schools, and our committee, our bullying problem, and, you know, zero tolerance. So I'm just trying to figure out the, you know, logistics of how I got started, or if it's going now, how to bring it back, but I will be looking forward to trying to get that committee up and running, and get it back in our schools, to where it needs to be.
I also wanted to just make a comment about some bullying that has come up in many emails, and, and I'm being now stopped, it's happening, I'm being stopped in the grocery store, and a few other places. So with the whole COVID thing, and changes coming up, and, you know, going from 10 days or 14 days to five days, and vaccines, no vaccines, all of this, I think we need to take a look and get really clear about bullying around this. I think there's bullying going both directions, I'm being told there's bullying going both directions. If kids are wearing masks, it shouldn't be anybody's business but the kid wearing the mask. If kid isn't wearing the mask, it's nobody's business but the kid and their family who's not wearing the mask. If a student's family decides that that student is going to get vaccinated, that is their business. It should not be any of our staff, I just don't think staff should even comment on it. That is, that is a personal choice, it's a medical choice, and I'm hearing a lot of noise about staff having an opinion to little kids, whether or not they should get vaccinated or not, and I think it's incredibly inappropriate. They are not at all qualified to give that kind of opinion. I even got an email about a little stuffed dragon in somebody's class, and Gus is a good dragon, he got vaccinated, and, you know, and then another instance, you know, well, we won't all be able to take our masks off until you all get vaccinated, I just think those are incredibly dangerous waters to tread into. And so I'm curious what our policy is for staff members having those kinds of conversations with students, and if, number one, what is the policy, and number two, are we strongly adhering to our policy, or is it one of those policies that just kind of floats around? And I, and I think we've got to get really, really serious about, there is no bullying about any of this, it's not these little kids' issue, they shouldn't even have to think about whether or not they're vaccinated or not vaccinated, and whether or not they or their friends are wearing masks, and why, and they're calling each other adult names that are coming, I know, from their families, or their friends, or whatever, but, but both sides, there's name-calling, there's all kinds of stuff, and I just think it's bullying, and we, we've got to make sure that, that our staff isn't involved in any of that, they should be stopping it, not instigating it. And then the same thing with, you know, I've got to teach these kids to be kind to each other, and be tolerant to different belief systems, because we're, we're a pretty split community, and I think it's important that, that we, we've got, at some point, we've got to come to a level of respect with one another, and kindness. So, again, I would, I would love to not get any more of those emails from parents or students that are stressed out because of this kind of bullying that's going on.
Do those type of emails need to be directed to you? I know sometimes parents send us-
I direct them, I send them all to these guys, no matter what, I, I think you need to know, you're our direct people, right? We don't want to go to your employees, if you need to send it on to somebody else from there, I'm just going to assume that that gets done.
We go to the principals, and then we discuss it with them, but-
And I'd love some follow-up, I mean, if, if, if parents are reaching out to us specifically, I think we need to be able to answer that parent, and tell them that, A, we reported it to you, and B, that, that we follow up and make sure that we can come back to that parent and say, or, I would love it if they came to us and said, hey, thank you, it got, it got handled, because that is a complaint out there, is that, well, we throw it out to somebody, but then nothing ever happens, it gets lost, and I, I get it, there's a lot, lot of balls in the air at one time, but the bullying thing has, it just leads to too many other- at one time, but the bullying thing has, it just leads to too many other negative, negative scenarios.
And Will, on yours, are you, you're working on coordinating to bring community members in, right, to kind of help draw our community in?
From what I understood, Tim Leone was on it at one point, and a couple other people were on it, and, but yeah, I definitely, I definitely want, I want teachers involved, I want community members involved, so as many, I mean, not as many, but as many people we can get from different entities involved in it, I definitely want that.
Okay, I think that sounds great. Any other?
Well, I just, in response to that, I wonder, I don't know what the previous structure was, but I wonder if the safety committee is a place for that? I don't know, I don't know, I don't know where it was housed before. I don't know, but, just a thought. What was I gonna say? I forgot what else I was gonna say.
While you're thinking, you know, Amanda, you know, if you brought that up because, you know, again, being on the six years, I was struck, I mean, early on, how many calls did you get over a variety, and there's usually people who were upset about something. And one of my first questions usually is, have you, you know, not that I don't want to hear about, and I never try to cross that line, but why wouldn't you go immediately to a school board person, and have you gone through channels, and more times than not, and, you know, they have, like, at a school level, as a building principal, I'd go to the parent and say, hey Doug, you've got a teacher doing this, and I can admit that or deal with that in my school setting, and if not, then using my director would get a call, but very rarely ever went to a superintendent, or to the superintendent of the school board, but it's sometimes like, maybe, maybe you need to see a thing with people, hey, you've got issues you want to hear about, and try to, you know, you're going to the teacher first, or, you know, and if that hasn't happened, then it's a fair question, like, are you seeing these blocks?
So I suggest that, just so you know, you know, I ask that if they don't come up for, but many of them have said, hey, I've, I've talked to the teacher, I've talked to the principal, I've done all this, now, here you go, you know, now I'm going to go somewhere to try to get it dealt with, yeah.
Well, totally, Doug, that's the part, maybe internally, you communicate to the rest of you, the principals, and, you know, here's the process, you know, we're trying to, to give all of us, I have a hard time believing that you're worth, because it's one of those called worth, the thing they do, and that, you know, sometimes they come back and, you know, that, again, to this point, too, it is for you all that, it's not to hang out there and be like, hey, you can either have this parent, or this, or this, or this, or whatever, or, if not, you just, you know, and again, I live in our little schoolroom, and I usually tell people, I can't do that directly, but I can pass it on to people who should, and usually that's going to be, I, very rarely ever call a building superintendent or people who would like to do that.
I guess my, my point more than anything is just from a, from a superintendent level, just making sure that, again, whatever our policy is, making sure that, that everybody on down the ladder is truly adhering to that policy. First of all, I shudder to think what the legal bill will be on that, if it gets out of hand. I mean, that could get really interesting, and so, you know, again, to protect our, first of all, protect our teachers, protect our kids, I mean, it protects everybody if we're following those rules. If the policy needs to be looked at and changed, then that's a different subject as well. We can take a look at that and see if anything needs to be adjusted, but I've looked at the policy, it looks like it's, it's pretty broad, but I believe it would cover those kinds of opinions.
The policy does cover it. I think the hardest part, and, you know, what our principals tell us when we're saying, you know, we need you to really pick up your vigilance on this area, is it's just, you know, it's just like when you have two kids in your backseat and they're, you know, kind of picking at each other, that kind of stuff, it's very hard to control the interactions between every child, but like you said, there's things in terms of if staff is kind of perpetuating stuff, obviously, there's no excuse for that in any manner. I mean, so, like I said, we will continue to do that, but I'm just saying, a policy only gets us so far, it's really about human behavior, and it's, it is really a hard one. And I would say we sometimes, you know, probably two-thirds of the time get resolution on an issue if the school will really bird dog it during, like, when the kids are out on recess, that kind of thing, where they're really monitoring kids' behavior out there, because that's where a lot of this is taken.
The kid-to-kid stuff, absolutely, but again, I think, I'm afraid we're going to start seeing some legal action if we don't get some of that cleaned up.
No, I agree.
I think you're just talking about making it very clear to all of our, our educators and staff, just kind of what, what our policy is, and make sure that we're, we're just sticking to the policy so that there's no legality from our side with recommendations, so, okay. Well, maybe we can pull up that policy and take a look at it, so, okay. Any other discussion?
I just think lastly for me, I'd like to thank, you know, how about Ms. Heiss and Ms. Circle and Dr. Hill for putting this on, I think it, you know, just shows that we all have different, you know, we all have different, you know, beliefs and different things, but we can come together and, you know, as a group and figure things out, so I think it was a productive, good few hours, so I want to say thank you.
Thanks for coming, yes, thanks for everybody, the staff that is here, we appreciate it. Thanks, Bridget, for getting everything coordinated, so, yeah, I look forward to, we may have to do these every now and again, because I think it just helps make sure that we're all on the same page, so, communication's key, all right.
Hey, we'll be looking for the name of that band in the Sentinel.
I know, yeah. MC Hammer poster, and look at this, it's not even 110 yet, so, yeah, thanks, everybody.